It turns out you're in covenant slate, so we were waiting for him in. It turns out you're in covenant slate, so we were waiting for him in.
It's now two oh four P M. And the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Georgetown Divide Public Utility District is now called to order. Then we have roll call, please.
All right, Director Stovall.
President.
Director Saunders.
Present.
Director Thornebro.
Here.
Vice President Seaman.
President and President McDonald.
Present. Thank you. Director Stovall, would you lead us on the pledge, please?
The pledge will be thanks to the United States of America. To the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments now regarding the adoption of the agenda? None? Okay. I will now close the public comment period. There will be no further public comment on this item. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
You got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, the motion was passed unanimously five to zero. Okay. We're entering public forum. Please note that the guidelines for the public forum as they appear on the median agenda. As a reminder, the Brown Act, the public must address all their public comments to the board, not to the staff or other members of the public. And due to the Brown Act limitations, the board is not able to discuss or take action on these items, not on the agenda. Public forum is now open. Cherie, you have the floor.
Okay. At the beginning of the August eighth twenty twenty-three board meeting, President McDonald read a brief notice stating the board will not now follow the Brown Act during meetings. Does that mean that in the past, this board has not been following the Brown Act? I'm really confused about the new rule of opening and closing public comments during an agenda item before the board discusses the agenda. It does not allow the public to hear the discussion of the board members, and therefore it does not allow the public to know how the board feels about a particular subject. This change was not voted on by the board, and also the notice is not reflected in the meeting in the or the August eighth meeting. Current policy number fifty forty point three point one point one states that the board discusses this item, then the public comments are heard. I checked other water districts, and this is how they handle comments. I looked at the board policy on the website, and it doesn't indicate this change in the meeting procedure. The policy hasn't been updated since twenty nineteen. For example, the change to limit the public comment time states that it's five minutes in the policy, but over about three months ago, the board changed it to three minutes. Also, policy fifty ten states that regular meetings are to be held at eight, nine A M., but they've actually been held for two P M. For many years. Minutes are also supposed to reflect the names of the staff that are in attendance at the meetings, but this is also not being done. The board needs to update their board policies to reflect correct policies so the public can know what is expected of them at the meetings. If the public has to follow the Brown Act, the board and the staff should have to follow the Brown Act.
Thank you. Any more public comment? The time of the forum is now closed. Nicholas, is there anything you would like to address with those comments?
Don't think so, but we can get a legal opinion on the order in which comments are being received.
Now for the consent calendar. Are there any members that wish to pull any of the items for discussion? I'll open this now to the public. None from the public. I will now close the public comment period, and there will be no further public comments for the moment.
I do have a comment to make if you'll allow.
Sure.
It's not so much a comment on any of the items. Item four C, before you leave today, if you would please sign the certificate. It has a time-sensitive adoption, and we would really appreciate having it signed before you leave today. And it requires all five of the board members to sign.
You have it ready to go?
It is. It's right here underneath her computer. So you can send it around.
Well, since it's on the consent calendar, we'll run it around, start it now.
Once you guys approve it, yes. Once you guys approve of the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. There are motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion was seconded by Director Siemens, and motion passes unanimously five to zero.
Yeah, I'm quick.
Permit, he didn't ask for a post. Oh. The order taken? Any opposed?
A lot of people voted to board.
All in process of elimination, but all in favor, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
We got quite the point there.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to still beat that.
Yeah. Financial reports. I'll now open it to public comment. All reports five A through five D. Are there any comments, Cherie?
The purchase order detail is not listed under the financial reports as agenda item. I have a question about the last two purchase orders. And B one one eight five oh and eight five five one. Why are there two different amounts that are going to the same O C conference? And then my other problem is WaterSmart. Twice already this year, I've been knocked off WaterSmart. My passwords don't work. I re-signed up yesterday to look at my bill, and I had to change the password. So I got the loan notice, and I corrected it, looked at it, and then today I get another notice saying I need to change my password. So I don't know if somebody's hacking into it or what, but I've never had a problem before. And it's twice already. So I don't know if somebody's going in with my account number and requesting a password. I don't know. But that's, I got it again today, but I had already changed it yesterday. So I don't know if there's glitches or whatever.
Mr. Down? I will now close the public comment period. Will be no more public comment on this section. Our staff, are there any other comments you wish to address?
I'll address the P O amounts. They're not different, so just be very one part of it is hotel, one part of it is the conference charge. So they're the same charges. They just appear. The second conference appears in a different P O. It's just out of order, I guess.
It says next to it, G M. One of them says Saunders. They're two separate transactions.
Are there any further comments? Yeah. Board members, you comment, please?
One, I, you know, I'm a little concerned that we're having a problem with that WaterSmart. The staff could look into that and see if we can find out why. She can call the office. We can troubleshoot.
If she were to call in during business hours, we can troubleshoot what's wrong with your WaterSmart, so she's familiar.
Okay.
Any other board comment? Then.
Then I could.
Sure.
If you don't get response, come back next and we'll get it fixed.
Yeah, well, I think there's been some problems with it. You know, emails were sent out, and I don't know if it.
Yeah, that shouldn't be happening at Water. It should be working efficiently.
Yeah.
It works for a lot of people.
Right, but we got to fix the glitches. And this is the first we're hearing about it.
No, the glitches are our fault either.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, just to look into it and
It was called, we'll figure out.
But I don't know why I've had to redo, and I used it like ever since it started, and this April thing was the first time I had a problem.
Is it, you said it happened to you multiple times already?
Twice already.
And like right back to back?
No, the last payment. So I think it was okay. It was the one prior. And then the
So it changed you about two times in like three months or less?
Well, yeah, four months.
Four months.
It's telling me I have, my password doesn't work. And I haven't written out.
And that is odd. We
But what was really weird, I changed it yesterday, got it corrected, and then I get a thing. We, you know, there's a notification of your password.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
We could just intuit that when you request a password reset, it took too long. I know, but maybe it's our, it's coming after the fact that you've already done what they're asking you to do in that.
Anyway, thank you for looking into it, Paul.
Staff. Budget to actuals report? If move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Going forward to the agenda is just going to say financials. It's not going to have them listed out. Because they seem to keep being requested to change them.
All right.
We're adding a couple other forms for finance committee requests, and so we figured the board would like to see those as well. It's more of a quarterly report of month, I said a monthly report. We could also bring in the quarterly reporting. We're also including the P O report that is requested by the board when the policy, when the purchasing policy changed. It's back in the main, and then we have done that, added that P O approval process.
Are you saying that we're getting both the reports in addition to quarterly?
We will get both.
Do you really need those?
The finance committee is just, we only have quarterly budget to actuals. Every other, every other report would be monthly.
The finance committee requested budget to actuals as a quarterly report as opposed to a monthly report.
Well, they can get that. I think we requested a monthly report.
We're going to give you both. We're going to give them the quarter. We're going to give you both. That's what we're trying to address. Committee member warrants for our request of quarterly bills.
Yeah. Item six, informational items. We will receive all these reports and we'll open these items to public comments after all have been given. Director Stovall, would you like to lead off?
I have nothing to report over the last time.
Director Saunders?
I also have a board report. If they attach this for the next.
It's attached. It's attached as part of the package.
So basically, the meeting is attended with the Regional Water Authority, Executive Committee in Sacramento. It's in Aqua, and the head one is the work group. I was interviewed by one of the water agencies for the Aqua Vice Presidency Committee, and we had a webinar which went last week. It was navigating the water use efficiency, exploring the challenges of watering with efficiency regulations in California's mountain counties. So I planned, created a certain round that moderated, and our general manager was one of the speakers. And from this, one of the things I've been doing since they came up with the new updates to our water use efficiency is probably put with sound the agenda where the two of us can give information to the board.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna give a presentation. Finance committee asked for a presentation, so we're gonna give one to them, and then we're gonna bring it to the next board meeting, and we're gonna present to the next board meeting.
And then I'll probably have a town hall to convert what what the public can do in terms of their, I guess, some things on ours or some things on theirs.
If we can hold off on a town hall for maybe one to two months so that we can put everything together, because I'm still working with state board and D W R on this. I'd like to have some finalization on some of that before we, obviously, we want the public to be involved, and I'm not trying to keep anything from them. I just want to make sure that we have all the answers that they're gonna ask.
And I know this is going, and I'll see how my state report, you know, ask for a call to action for people to go to the state water resource, and so water again, so we're going to block some of the challenges that we're gonna face.
So in my G M. Report, you'll hear an October fourth, we'll be probably testifying before the state water control board.
I'll probably just send it to the comments again, let's, there's a support, I'll be.
If you want to send me comments, I can read them.
And legislative reports, so I met with the district director for Senate Wednesday, and I think it's in our general manager's report as well, but they added us to the budget junior trailer bill, A B one oh four, so D code is in for two hundred fifty thousand dollars on the line I want. But so if the budget passed, we'll get something from the state to cover the the generators and the A M. Meter. The new bill that we talked about last time, A B seven five five five, that went through November, and it's passed, so it's continuing to move forward. This is one, it's kind of an abundant bill, and it kind of has added the information which is coming from the updates with the water use efficiency, but this one kind of requires public agencies to identify their highest water users and put out a cost of service analysis, and it's kind of mandating more work on the district and more significant significant expense, and we also have to report this to the legislature and come up with our best practices. One of the bills that we're meant to watch, and probably we will recommend opposing this bill.
That's seven five five? Eight, that's B?
Eighteen seventy-five.
Wait, is that seven fifty-four?
Seven fifty-four was the reservoir one.
That was held.
And that one was held.
Yeah, that was held. That was great news. That was held in for many. And then I'll, are you?
And then the federal one, so I attached the copy of the Stream Act, and so you can take a look at that. That's Senator's fine sign bill. That's one the R W A is going, it's on their report to vote to approve it. And on meeting Thursday, it has specific to the Sacramento Regional Water Authority is in there and ground backing. And the list of our bills that we have told is at report is after that. That's pretty much from our report.
And what's been done then? And add, end of session is the fourteenth, so end of legislative session this year is Thursday. From that point forward, the governor, any bills that hit his desk, I believe, have ninety days to sign. If they don't sign in ninety days, they do pass. Either has to veto them or sign them. After ninety days, if they do not pass, he basically, basically passes with, without his approval.
Significant bills that are still going is is the teleconference explosion. We are still the one for emergency, so they're trying to extend that because that it started in January first.
Director Thornebro?
Are these all the ones we had talked about, or there's any additional ones on here that we haven't talked about?
We haven't talked about was the Stream Act.
It's a federal congressional bill.
Right, we need to either vote on to approve or not to approve, or oppose or not to oppose.
The Stream Act, we can keep watching, because I mean, it would be, what we would vote on is if we wanted to send a letter of support to on the bill, so that would be one. I know our advocacy is already out there. It would be up to the board to decide if they're interested in sending a letter of support to Senator Fine Stat.
We are part of a regional coalition that is sending in support, so we don't have to vote on it specifically unless.
Whether or not the board is supporting it or not supporting it. Previously, we went through this list of
Sure, we could bring that back.
Can we? That's why I'm asking, is there any new ones that are on here that claim that we're, you know, neutral on that we both, we didn't vote on?
No, just that one.
Okay.
The one we discussed last time was A B seven five five, and it's still on watch now, and since it's the legislative session ends Thursday, that's why we didn't put it down to vote to oppose, so we'll see what happens.
We poured out today that I went to the C S D A Annual Conference with Nicholas, and primary areas of focus and interest for me, I attended, was some good board practices and budgeting processes and alternative options to Tyler system, which we decided for that at some point. Attended Kevin Kylie's town hall and thanked him for his support for federal appropriations funding for the groundwater storage tank, and asked me to talk a little bit about how benefits can be accolades to Lisa, who was a quick responder to one of our customers who had a supposed water leak. And gentleman came out very next day at seven thirty A M., don't know who that was, to look at the meter, take readings. And then Lisa called, you know, lickety-split. I mean, so she's very happy, not about the leakage, but about our customer service. And I want to thank Elizabeth for a good organization, Board Packet again, and perhaps just maybe double side some of the where, where and when.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, that's all that I have. Any board comments regarding any of the committee reports? What's none? Oh, hang on a second.
They were going to go through all the reports, and then we're going to receive all the comments together.
Yeah, so.
And I believe we already got what's that? Yeah, we got, we got the ledge report, so I think we're on the operations manager. He commented, he said he didn't have the updates.
Okay. Moving on now to action items.
We're on operation manager report.
Okay. Well, that was the legislator. Yep. Okay, operations manager report, Adam Tis.
Yeah. I was just starting off with the stuffy Meadows levels, which we're still doing pretty good. We are at ninety percent, little, a little above ninety percent, which is hundred point percent of average for this time of year, which is if you add normal, you know, all their water projection stuff is you're not going to look at that much, I don't think, because we're going in the winter season. We'll be going this season. So it's kind of interesting, too. You know, we've seen the recent rain, and really, our, our outflow is the lowest it's been. I just don't be on the bottom, bottomed out there since I've been here last five years or so. Which is probably historically low, or like, you know, twenty C F S, we haven't cracked that level yet. Usually, we're twenty-five, twenty-six. Well, that's something, so it's either this additional, I think it's related to additional, you know, saturated soil from the winter. Keeping our, keeping a good water supply. Treatment production was similar to last year, that we came down from last month. I was able to help with our galley paper cap that the state is asking about, so that's good. And in summary, at the second page, it's summary of all the field activities. Some of our asset management, our software shows what, what we're doing. I still have a lot of focus on the raw water section. Kind of third gate and down. We have a lot of growth down there. We're revisiting some of the spots multiple times this year. I don't know. Not sure why, you know, I think it's just extra growth or whatever it is, you know, it's just, it's been a bit of challenging year, but I think we it's smoothed out, but there's still a lot of work, a lot of monkeying, a lot of cleaning out debris. We've had some clogs where it's been blocking up and shorting people water in different areas, but you know, we usually find out about them that, you know, that day, and we get the water flowing again. That's that. Got the next one. It's got the standard monthly map you do of the dish areas. You gotta see the highlight, it's really focused on, on that area down there, so. Let me try to come up with some ideas for next, next season to totally mitigate some of that work and really be able to have a better going over for it. So the first picture shows some of the, what we've been doing in that country. First two sets of pictures there, you have some vegetation, putting in the standards, some tree falling. We're trying to clean up some of the leftover trees along the canal where they fell into the canal during winter, so we're working on that. And that's kind of what's here Pacific, and some of the private landowners up there did not, you know, address it, wanting to get next, next dark canals, so we were using that. The next two pictures is, a couple weeks ago, we had a it's still, you know, we, we had a kind of a little scare up there, a big hole opened up in the ditch, and you know, we're losing about one C F S, which one C F S is about forty meters inches. You know, it was surfacing fifty to sixty feet down slope of the canal. So we did emergency repair to try to shore it up. We have it slowed down, but it's not completely slowed down, so we're let's see later in the stack, we're going to talk about it, kind of trying to come up with a plan to try to mitigate that moving forward. It's just really sandy soil. A lot of the root systems there are now burnt, now they're dying, so they're creating those pathways for water to seep down, and once they find that pathway, they start sweeping out, so. We actually, we first got notified by P C W A. They actually saw the impact at the Rawson After Bay. They were looking for, they didn't know where it was. They asked us, and we knew, you know, none of our gauges indicated anything, but then we once we got up there and looked, we found it towards the end of the day at the same time they did. So we have a plan, we'll talk about that in a minute. The rest is just some of our standard pictures, and just trying to keep track of, you know, the length, how many hours, the resources we're using to clear these different areas. We see the impacts, you know, we have basically the first two pictures on page five, we have pretty thick growth to go through and clean that, but it helps to spring the water level down. Water keeps pushing through, and it helps on leaks and seep issues near people's property, so that's really you know, that is too. Typical service line replacement, that is ongoing. You know, I said a couple of examples of years doing that. We replaced, we worked on the hydrant up, that's actually one of Volcanoville Road, and when we're springing, there's a lot of work going on up there between the logging companies and private landowners, getting up through the fires. We just kind of shore up that little area so we don't get erosion, leave the hydrant in, in state intact. To page seven, good summary, capital improvements program. Working with Castle Engineering, we're trying to see if we can get something lined out for that. Infrastructure building, we're still working, working on that. We have a lot of new information there. Tank coating, we have art, we're going to have the proposal going out either end of this month, beginning of October, or we coat the Kelson tank, and that will, will happen probably February, March, you know, during our low demand season. I'll be able to have it ready before, before winter season, kind of that little window before summer and after winter. Vehicle replacements, we're talking about that this means, so I'll save that for there. Master meters are expected October. Pump station. So work on those. We got a pump, we're going to replace it at the reservoir pump station. Angel Camp's having we replaced the stator out there, still having some issues, so working on that right now. The P R V is related to the water system reliability study that Castle's doing, it's kind of the last step that we're going through. So I'm, all our field crews, they've done a great job this last month, months and a half, they've done every single P R V. Assess every single one of them, what, where the deficiencies are, and then we're going to put that part of our, the larger castle study in those. That's kind of the last step of that study, so once I finish that, I have about half of them into the system where I can update them. And I'll drop that report shortly after that. So that is, that's good. That's a big step for the district, getting that report finalized. It's been, it's been a process, I mean, it's been almost a year, like a year now, so, but there's a lot to it. It's not just, you know.
P R D.
P R V, pressure regularly, pressure reducing back. Or regular. General activities. Obviously, the C I P, all the stuff you mentioned before. Still working with P G N litigation, they're finalizing their findings, so that's kind of near the end of this month. Theme reimbursement is the work on those from the emergency declaration in January, December. Water Smart Grant for Canal Lightning in the Spring is still moving forward on that, so we're doing environment review on that right now. And then, you know, general customer service, which pulls, pulls the ball way a lot, I think, sometimes where we have this lineup we're doing that day. It's one o'clock before we get to it, so. Last page, page eight. So, what did we talk about last? Last month, I showed some pictures of some of the impacts up there. And so it's always changing. We had, there's a fire, four thrs came through, now the private lenders are coming through. Because we have a lot of challenges moving forward up there. We have a lot of, there's a lot of risk up there, what's going on. We're trying to manage the best we can, but we really have to. Um, we're trying to manage the best we can, but we really have to think addresses front center, otherwise we could have, you know. More emergency in the future, and like what happened last week is kind of like, we, I think we anticipated, we don't do some of this work. So the first part is erosion control efforts and road mitigation efforts, um, that's kind of, we're playing that for October. We can't do a lot in the canal until season's over, because we have to be able to get water flowing. Yeah, well, now, so we're going to start with the erosion mitigation, which is. Um, so fencing, straw waddles, we're going to use, get growler bird scheduled for two weeks of. October to help, you know, reduce the cost there, they get silk fencing up and do a lot, a lot of that work for us. We'd be able, twenty man crew every day, gets a lot of, a lot done. But we're just going to focus on areas, um, we're not going to be able to do the entire thing, we're going to focus on areas where we saw last year during the rain events. Where the most silk came into the canal, so we'll focus on those spots. Castle Engineering came through and they evaluated um high risk areas, so we're going to focus on those as well, just trying to mitigate as much as we can. Um, the second is road mitigation, um, that's becoming. A larger issue that I think we anticipated with the logging activity up there, activities, a lot of people logging, they're using electric roads, they're used to access roads. Um, we're working with those landowners to, you know, support us with either grading. Um, erosion, some erosion control, so some of their requirements is actually do cut banks above. Um, the canal to limit erosion, so we're working with them on that, and. We're not going to be able to get them, you know, do all of this work, you know, we really, because they, they go in there, like, yeah, they go in there summertime and they leave. And they don't understand like what it's like for us in the winter to get down there now. Once you get a little bit of rain, it's almost impossible, um. Especially now, with all the vegetation, all the clearers gone. So we plan to get, you know, basically rock most of the road up there, um, so we can have access during rain events. We have a uh progress for bid out right now for contractors to deliver that rock, and it will be us, our labor going in there and. Um, you know, spraying rock, um, doing what the grading that they don't complete, we'll be back and do that as well. And, you know, keep the water, the road water and make sure we have access before, no, it's, you know, that's kind of planned on that side. And obviously there's some costs associated with that.
Yes, some of the costs will be reimbursed through FEMA, and some of the costs are looking to be reimbursed through litigation. So those are uh something that's going to be a hit to our our bottom line of our budget, unfortunately, it's just there's a need. And as of right now, we are assessing where we can pull the money from the budget. But there is some money coming in through the FEMA projects that we can cover some of this, but not all of it.
Okay, so in the second part, the upper canal uh emergency pipe work, so that is what those because it's talking about. Then um in about a couple of weeks ago. So we're assessing that with our, with the district engineers, we already have the environment to go out there to do their their portion of it. Uh, but that will kind of come after season. Hopefully, beginning of November, we have, if the weather holds, we'll be able to get up there and get about. We've got about two hundred feet, this is one section from an old crossing, about two hundred feet upstream from that. Um, so obviously a cost associated with that too, like Nick was saying, all this is, this is all fire related, so it's all. Um, worst case is all going toward the P G D litigation, so yeah, we have to pay for it upfront. Like, you know, down the road, or, you know, we're tracking all our costs, all our time, all the material that goes into it, all all effort we're doing. And so we can show, uh, you know, what state can keep, keep this system, and how much it's costing, so that we can, you know, recover those costs in the future.
And we're also reaching out to Sierra Pacific to help with someone missing spell. And right now, we haven't received much response, but it is an avenue that we're going because they are roads that they use and they are. Uh, facility that will be benefited by that in the future.
Well, like, one property or other actually has, they, part of their scope is doing great funding for tree removal and their. Part of their grant is actually gravel some of the road as well, so there, it's a team effort, you know, it's like, we're part of it, all the property owners, they're part of it, so. I'm kind of working together to get it. The best condition that they can, it can be when they leave, because, you know, we have to deal with the next twenty years, no one's going to be out here for twenty years until they log again, so. Uh, this last page is, is fine man assessment, um. Went down a little bit, it seemed cooler, you know, August, July, um, people are paying attention to water use, that's, that's good.
For August, you know, hundred and thirteen, we have a whole thirteen infections, uh, by. Got a couple of plan reviews going in, so news of them, uh, we're kind of specifically hanging around the same three years, didn't go out in a while, but they're. Exactly out, so they're in the construction phase, uh, kind of interesting. Um, resulted of the after, we got two new comp tanks, which is nice. That's down on on leakage and potential for public health and food. Uh, we have the nose bill cert for August, submitted on September first. The second quarter of the zone report was submitted August first, and then I met with E source for our annual water audit validation August ninth. Uh, it has not been turned in yet because the state, like, we did the. The website for that, so we're waiting to hear from the state before we can turn everything in, but we're validated, so. Uh, it's fine, uh, we got third quarter zone sampling completed. Uh, mid-August, so the third quarter, we're going to do in December, so we're getting ready for that. Uh, we had point one seven inches of rainfall. Which was well, mainly for all the dust. Um, as far as trying to locate that snow from the previous report that we were talking about. Like, which amount of it was raining and how much it snowed, it was really hard for me to track down our area specifically, because we don't have a lot of bridges. But I was able to dig up a few things from Noah on the winter of fifteen sixteen. And I've pretty much been copying and pasting it um from the website, kind of showing. It was a lot of rainfall down, you know, where I looked at. Our river shut, the highest point that I could find was fifty-eight hundred and some some change. Everything was over like seven thousand, eight thousand feet, really lots of snow, so I think we're going to be pretty wet until. Like, next year, if we anywhere, February, March, I was kind of been pushing winter back. I did look up on Wuhan's cabin, I Facebook stalked them and found pictures from. The winter of sixteen to seventeen, and all the snow was March, April. They, I think that was even the year that they had some late, it was like May, they got like a foot. But they also were saying, you know, the ninety-seven, ninety-eight winter, it was going to prevail those two, and ninety-seven was the year that Columbia flooded. So I'm, I'm on the fence of whether or not we're going to get dumped on, or hopefully it's just snow, but either way. Going to be a rough winter up there, I think. Not having any ground cover for that so.
Thank you, Alexis. General Manager Report.
Excuse me, thank you, I'll do some high level uh things, uh, had a ledge visit with staff and multiple. And uh was hosted by P C W A, but they utilized our facility to to do that. So we were able to have a front seat to being able to present uh fire and uh mitigation. And how both the King Fire and the mosquito fire affected uh this district. Uh, attended uh regional general manager meeting of from R W A, um, the twenty-first of August. Uh, kind of outlining potential issues, potential struggles, uh, things that are coming down the pipeline. So a good resource is allowing uh other general managers to just kind of discuss what's happening within their districts. And figuring out how we can uh continue to move forward. I met with uh our attorneys regarding the P G D litigation. Uh, attended a couple of Aqua State Legislative Committee meetings, uh, also attended the C S D A Annual Conference in Monterey. Was able to speak at the Aqua Regional Three event that was uh mentioned by Director Saunders. And we hosted the uh volunteer agreements, reservoir operators group on the eighth of September. So that's a group of all the uh local uh anybody who operates a reservoir. So E I D, P C W A, Forest Hill, and us. Um, some good news, it's almost my first, end of my first year, um. Hope it's been pretty successful, to think in my eyes it has been, and hope for many more. Uh, good news and bad news, so we should be having an El Nino, which is great for our our water supply, but could be bad for our infrastructure. And uh I didn't include it in here, and uh Director Son already stole my thunder, but did receive uh an email after a long awaited. Uh, email from the state, uh, our state senator of the state appropriation, so we originally asked for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they were able to bring in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the district, so that's fantastic news. Um, we have identified four um pieces of infrastructure that need generators. For when power goes out here to ensure that all of our customers have water. And we are going to use the balance of that money to start or to continue to work on our A M I infrastructure uh uh process. Um, and. Do have uh a discussion item that I want to discuss with the board members, just to get a a hand raised. But I wanted to show you the pictures, so you can see, this is the the picture of us at the. Uh, this is basically the overlook just to the, it's gonna be the north and east of Stubby Meadows. So we're kind of discussing how the mosquito fire burned through our infrastructure. And you can see our uh our water drop that was out at National Night Out again, so that's, uh, we have a, we have a water drop again. And. We have one compliment, I wanted to uh give our executive assistant a shout out. We had a compliment from one of our constituents saying, uh, they called this morning to compliment the quality of writing in the newsletter. In particular, the four hundred years to the source piece that was commended and complicated for being well written. So this four hundred years, the source is basically uh an assessment of the mosquito fire and the and the king fire. And how close they are together and how close they are to our infrastructure, so a huge shout out to Liz for bringing us into the public eye. I'll also give her a huge shout out that her article got picked up on the Cal Fire Grant that we submitted. So she's been really uh knocking it out of the park with getting us out of the public eye. And uh putting us back on the on the front page, quite literally on the front page. Uh, and then lastly, before we continue to move on, is Founder's Day, it's September twenty-fourth. And I wanted to see a show of hands of any of the board members that may want to participate in Founder's Day. Saunders, Stovall. It's the twenty-fourth of September, so if you, if you can do it, if you don't want to tell me today in the meeting, you can go ahead and reach out to me later, it's a Sunday.
Yeah, surgery, surgery, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, I forgot you're having surgery, um, so it's, we're going to be participating, I think we set up at seven, Jessica, seven A M setup.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty setup, and we will likely be sworn down before noon, because before all the fun stuff happens. We were at the parade, we basically tear down, so. If anybody is welcome, if you're all, all are welcome, if anybody wants to come, you can uh reach out to me later. And that is, oh, sorry.
I had a couple of questions.
That's all I had.
Commentary first, please. Uh, Mr. Dow, did you have a?
I did, I got a couple of things, um, Mike, and you mentioned that state assembly or the state assembly member, who was that? Oh, okay, and uh, I was wondering, um, oh, I'm going to tell you, I was up at Stumpy the other day and and. It's right on the spillway, we're doing really good, I've never seen in fifty years I've lived here that much water in that lake at this time of the year. And another thing, the glory pool right down below here, that is full, it's never full this time of year, it's only down a couple, two, three feet. And we're, we're doing really good, so I think the groundwater underneath us is, is uh full. And another thing about the, you were saying about the ditches up above the top country. Have you checked out those two seeded trees that are down, I've been mentioning this.
Yes, we're on it.
Those things.
We're on it.
They come down, it's going to open up that ditch, and we're going to be spilling water and throw up any water getting to a rainwater for five, five better months. So, you know what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When they come down, it's going to be two of them, they'll take that ditch out, it's 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 going to avoid infection. So, I think that's. That's like mandatory, you should check that out.
We were addressing it.
Okay. And I think that's, oh, uh, has the check gotten into El Dorado savings from the grant, that one point two?
I'll, I'll, I'll answer that after, we take a, I'll look at my.
I'm on the OX manager report, what does uh P C W A have to do with our upper area? Do they have facilities up there?
I'll answer that.
And then my other thing, they are going to remove those trees from the bank, or they can put them there for corro, for erosion. And then in the V M report, what type of generators? Like standalone? Anyway, that's it.
Just time for. So the generator, um, they are twenty, about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a piece, some of them are three-phase generators, some of them require a certain kilowatt hour. And it has to do with uh tying into the P G D system, so it's a, it's a full system. It's not just for the generator, that's to do all the work to tie in and everything.
So they're like the ones here?
Very, yes, very similar, so it'll be the ones that kick on automatically as soon as the, as the power goes up.
Propane, so yeah.
Correct, correct. And then your other question was uh in regards to P C W A, so in the Rubicon River, they actually saw some uh discoloration in their water. And so then they started to trace back where that discoloration was coming from, and they traced it back to um upper, upper parts. Correct, is there, was there one more question? The trees, and we're working on the 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 two-seater tree, just for your.
Yeah, on the general manager report, you mentioned the discussion with the I, the I D about the water rights, was that informational? Or was there some kind of outcome that came out of that discussion? I, 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 I'm hopeful, you know, and then also, um, Adam, you, I see the picture up here of the. Fire hydrant up by volcano run?
Yeah.
Is that a raw water? Okay, yeah, and so there's no reason to really be there, that isn't it?
Obviously, so do, you know, so, you know, so the water.
Okay, yeah.
Hydrate meter, anything, made better on damaging the hydrant, so.
When you said you were discussing, you know, uh, spending the money, do we have that um pump station over on Lake Trails? Uh, with secondary containment and or the varigels, the V F D on it yet?
I'm sorry, you had to.
Waste water.
So, what money are we thinking about spending?
Well, when you were going through your report, you were saying you were looking at getting generators, you were looking at doing this, this, and that, so.
Then, so that's not, that wouldn't qualify, it has to do with water conservation.
Okay, um, so that's definitely right there by that stream.
You're going to, this, this separate, um, Alexis is working on that update to that, that's, that's separate.
Okay.
That, yeah, that's, yeah, totally different, yeah.
Just so we don't forget that one, that can really, you got to get back.
Yeah, we are.
I'm working on it, I'm hoping this week when we. Get the package, basically the plan together, and we can, hopefully you put it in through some grants. Because it's the longer infrastructure stuff that we can, can all live.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's going to fit, but. But yeah, it's, that's, okay, high on the list, we're going to.
Um, any other thing, have we heard from D W R yet?
Or?
Or getting us out of doing the uh all run like trails.
It doesn't look good, yeah, doesn't look good.
You need a bigger bath.
I do, I need a, I need a big woodshed.
Yeah. The, the most I did as far as the WDRF, when they got our, um, engineers a little bit more information. He wanted, there was a giant list of stuff that we gave. To the county, the county read through and said that they don't. Want to do it. And then Dave asked for. That list so he could go over them. So I gave him a little bit more, but that's all I.
So there's, we're gonna have a big update at the October meeting and Dave Harden, our engineer is gonna come and he's gonna give his assessment of what is going on and why. Uh, there's an issue. So there's, there's, there's an issue that we're trying to come up with a solution to. That the district engaged in back in nineteen eighty-four. And unfortunately, right now, it is not a promising outcome that we are seeing, unfortunately.
So we are. I just want to make sure we're still.
We are, we're still on it. It's, it's been pretty front center with, we're, we're, we're trying to flip a few pans and see what we can do.
Okay.
And Steve Miller's in the loop. Yeah, yeah, that was always been a concern in history.
Oh, I am. Not, that's a, an important person to be in. This is the guy that's gotta be doing the work. Um, and the other thing is on the, uh, what do you call that? That crystal reports are the ones that. Wasn't that the, whatever the reports, you, you, we bought a program that was going to be taking our assets. And, and be able to say, okay, are we now using, utilizing this program? So you've done a thousand feet of ditch clearing in this area and that is now inputted. With the information of issues that you've run into when you were doing this ditch clearing, that all the notes would be there for. Ease and any benefit, uh, for future work in that, in a spot?
Yeah, it's definitely, uh, yeah, we are definitely doing that. It's like we're seeing the, I've seen the benefits like. Beyond what I thought it was gonna bring, but yeah, it's every, so every segment has, you know, every time they do work to it, it gets tracked, recorded. Tells what they did, what they used, how long it took them. And then like for these. Um, for these bigger projects, there's another part of that where we can put all of them together, brings it all together. You can see the overall project. It's really helpful for reimbursement and protraction, knowing like big gun like projects or big liner place of project. That's how I can bring in numbers so easily. Otherwise it's really difficult. I could deal with it in like five, ten minutes and. Put it all together and present in a nice way.
Okay.
And she can do what equipment, how many hours, and we can actually, uh, equate the hours for the equipment to a dollar and, and so.
Yeah, cause previously we were having problems. Cause you, you couldn't get the program, you were having program issues, so like.
Took a while to set up. It's a complicated, so it took, it took a long time. Now it's like, it's up and running, you know, we're, we're probably ninety-five percent there. You know, that's really, it's getting between, you know, what, what we need in here and the field guys like commuting back and forth. They all have it all, they're coming around. Yeah, yeah.
Nicholas, do you have a comment on a board?
I, I had a comment on one, a public comment, if you notice, I just missed a comment from Mr. Dowd. And he asked about the check. So, so that's not how grants work typically. You don't get a check. You do the work and then you get a check. And so with the Cal Fire Grant. We will be, we're working with Cal Fire right now to develop scope of work and sometime in October, November timeframe. We should have that scope of work finalized. And then, um, part, a portion of the work is we hire a forester. And the forester, we hire a company, uh, like a land clearing company. Uh, and they, they, uh, will go out and, and work with the forester to develop these fire breaks using our infrastructure. And then we will purchase equipment based on after that is done to maintain those fair breaks. And so it's not like a check. Um, it's kind of a misconception that these grant monies are checks. It's you sort of spend the money and then you get the money. It's kind of like, uh, it, uh, when you. You know, get reimbursed your, your health insurance and they don't, they pay you back at the end.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, for Saunders.
Are we gonna bring back, uh, CIP and measures for some of the mosquito fire mitigation? Cause we should be trying to page this stuff through CIP and readjust that as a base to our regular budget.
Yeah, so we're, we're bringing back some of the bits and we're gonna try to bring it all back at once.
Okay. And then, uh. She asked me about the VR one. And then the secondary part of that, so when you get the update, it will also go over the AD portion of that?
Yes, and, and that question is, is, is also not promising.
Oh, that's, that's kind of scary.
So there, there, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give the, the kind of the thirty second synopsis. There's options, but we're still determining what those options may be. It's not looking like, um. It was as easy as we hoped. And it's, has to do with a legal case that happened in nineteen eighty-four. The district took an, a legal opinion. Put the district in a position that it's very, very hard to get out of. It is an adjudicated position. And when you adjudicate something, you kind of make it forever. And unfortunately, that may be the thing that's holding us up. And so that's for Mr. Harden to come in and answer more questions. I can give you as much as I can give you. Um, but he has kind of the, uh, technical engineering perspective of why it's an issue.
Director Saunders, any more? Other reason, uh, Director Seaman. That I brought up, uh, Steve, Chairman Miller, free to turn. Steve Moore, was because about every other meeting, board meeting for the last five years, he's been wanting a follow up. And he's in the loop as far as where we are now. Was concerned that he keeps bringing, that's the reason. He's the hub of the wheel, but Steve Miller's the squeaky wheel. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say. Um, I have a question. Was that leakage Adam caught? As a result of a gauge or a gully? That was noticed?
Our gauge actually, it was, our gauges are running in that area twenty-four to twenty-five and we didn't see it. We, that's the first thing I checked. I got, oh, it's a gauge. And then once I was able to contact our panel operators, you know, they were able to find it.
What's normal? Twenty-four, twenty-five? What was this?
Well, we could act, you couldn't really see it on the gauge. You couldn't really see the difference.
Oh, oh, but you're getting the gully.
Yeah, yeah.
Inspection, did?
Yeah, we, we're easy up there a couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah, so then they, yeah, they, they found it by the time I was able to contact them. They were already up there. So they had found it by then.
Okay.
I think the moral of the story is super huge kudos to PCWA for being a good neighbor. And, and, you know, they were trying to figure out, so they, they contacted us and, and. That's what good relationships can get us. And so we're trying to maintain and continue to build those relationships and. Uh, I would say that PCWA was, you know, gets a gold star for, for reaching out to us and we really appreciate them.
Thank you. And Mr. Dowd, um, no, I'm just gonna make a comment on your. Comments, last four board meetings, uh, uh, three's a charm. We, we're taking action on it like Nicholas said about the trees. And you as a professional forester logger and a current recreational logger, you know stuff about trees and tree roots.
Yeah.
So I just want to let you know it's noticed by the board that you have some credit, street cred.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a.
I'm gonna link my check in.
It's in the mail. After you do the work.
Well, now you're a big photographer too.
I, I, I think this concludes this section. Uh, I, I had a comment. With what I believe would be the best interest of the public for clarity and efficiency overall. But, and remember when the public brought up the, uh, public forum and.
You're welcome to reopen that public comment if you feel it's necessary.
Well, I wanted to get the legal counsel's answer to Cherie's question.
Sure.
Firsthand and get it, you know, answered when you were, uh, before you came in. I was wondering if.
I would be happy, but I'll pose the question. So the question was, uh, in the past, what, uh, what policy fifty-ten, I believe you said, I just wanna reference. Um, basically, uh. She's requesting that we do board discussion and then public comment as opposed to public comment and board discussion. So she can hear how the board is going to weigh in, uh, particular items. So she can engage her comments based on that.
On the general public commentary or do you have a particular item?
Agenda one.
Right, for action items.
Oh, for action items, cause you just went through these items and you took public comment at the, the discussion.
Correct.
Hey, so you're referring to. I guess we get to item eight or nine, right, the actions?
Yes.
The Brown Act basically says. You can take public comment either before or during the item under consideration. So in other words, as long as it's before there's a vote. You can take public comment at any point prior to that. Some agencies do it. At they open the item and they take public comment on it. Some have some discussion, take a staff report. And then do public comment. But, I mean, the Brown Act just says it has to be before or during consideration. It just can't be after consideration. In other words, you can't vote on it and then take, take it in public comment.
One bite of the apple and one bite of the apple.
Right, yeah.
Okay, does that help?
I just would like it to go back the way it was. Somebody hear your views and then have a comment. Cause a lot of times I have questions and they get answered by the board, so I don't have.
I think for action, we can, we can, um. Think of the board comments and then the public comment. I don't think that that changes anything.
That's how I'd like to see it.
And that's how we'll see it.
And, and eliminate the, uh, public back and forth between the public, the questions in just three.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, it's very common for boards to have some discussion about the item. Get a staff report from staff, discuss it a little bit and then go to public comment, open it, take public comment, close it. And then usually that, that's the point where you deliberate and then possibly vote.
Yeah.
So that's, that wouldn't be uncommon. I'm just saying, you know, it's obviously the board's discretion, but that seems to work sometimes. Your board members or your elected officials like to have a little bit of discussion and. You know, it's relative to the board before you get, but they also like to get public comment too. It's after that, after that, there's been a little bit of discussion, so. And that is relatively consistent with what you're doing with. Four, five, six and seven, in the sense that you're going through all of those items. And then you are having public comment, even though there's no vote at the end of it, you're still having. A discussion of public comment after there's been some discussion on it, so.
So I think, um, what the, I hate saying is we'll take the public comment or they'll take the, the board discussion on the public comment at the very end and then we'll, we'll deliberate and vote.
Isn't this a discussion for the board?
I, I'm just reiterating, yes, it's probably for you guys to decide however you like to do it. I'm just reiterating what he's saying this one.
Okay, yeah. And I guess what I would say is speaking of discussions and votes, this has not been agendized. This discussion itself. So I think we want to have a discussion on this. We can do it in the future. We could amend your script accordingly to do that because this is, uh, to Director Seaman's point, this is a board, board matter.
Just one direction.
Yeah.
Okay, we will now. With committee reports. We will receive all these committee reports and will open these items to public comments after they've all been given. First committee irrigation, uh, Director Seaman or Thornbrook?
I think we gave the last report at the last meeting was, uh, July twentieth.
Yeah.
So I don't think we have anything to discuss.
The only thing we have an update is the date, um.
And, and, yes.
We have a special irrigation meeting date of the nineteenth. Um, it had to be rescheduled due to some conflicts with committee members. So the meeting is Tuesday, two o'clock, ninth to nineteenth. So I apologize that it's still for the twenty-first and there we just, we just made this change.
Anything else from the commission committee?
That's it.
And it's been confirmed.
It had been confirmed, yes.
Okay, finance committee. Um, Andy Fisher, he said he didn't get the memo last time.
So we discussed and we'll use the board liaisons to do the, uh, board reports. And I know Mr. Stovall was not in attendance. As he was on, uh, out of the, out of the area. So if Mr. McDonald, you'd like to give it or if you'd like me to give an update on the finance committee, I'd be happy to.
Last time I did, why don't you take it this time?
Okay, so the last finance committee meeting, we discussed the audit and the reserve policy. We did finally receive the finalized audit, which you will receive today. The recommendation from the finance committee was to submit it to the board for recommendation and approval. Um, previous to that, they recommended, uh, a hundred and fifty days, no, excuse me, a hundred and twenty days of operating reserve. Uh, to be recommended to the board, which will also be heard as I have P C B. So that is the update from the finance committee.
Thank you. Next meeting, September twenty-eighth.
That is correct.
Okay, uh, we, we have anything from the EDHOP committee for policy manuals from Director Seaman or Saunders?
You're the big guy, so, and you always want to say something, so go.
I always point to you. Uh, basically, um, we discussed this, so the CEQA, um, policy is still being reviewed and, uh, we worked. Uh, the next policy they're gonna look at is, uh, asset management policy that ties in with the, um. Asset management program that we have, so we're gonna tie that in with CIP and all of, you know, the things that come with that. And as, uh, which we talked about before, that's, we have a whole list of policies and there was, uh. Two years where policies and resolutions that were passed by the board weren't updated on the website or. Into our, uh, policy manuals. So in October, we will, or. Or, um, then they will be presented with updates to, you know, how the policies are going to be updated in future and. Review the list on where we are, but we're going through every policy and.
Yeah, if I could just add, um, we've identified some policies that, that will need to just be reformatted to the new, uh, format. The new numbering system and those policies will be coming forth in the next one, two board meetings. And that will be part of that overall update. Some of the policies aren't gonna change. They just need to be reformatted into the current format. And, uh, we are going to review them for any other, uh, issues and they will be pushed forward to the board. So we have identified, I want to say thirty to forty of those types of policies that will just be reviewed by the policy committee and then forwarded onto the board for review.
Anything else from the, uh, EDHOP policy committee? Next meeting, September twenty-eighth. Um, grant writing committee.
We haven't had a meeting yet. We weren't supposed to do the, um. I did, I know we already did the support for her, but it was supposed to be a little bit of.
Um, she, we rewrote a letter for her because it was support, so we wrote a letter.
And my next meeting is October. Fourth and since I looked at it, certainly every, um, Monday and, uh.
And then just a couple of updates of things that we're looking at that were not discussed at the grant meeting because they were, came after the fact. There is a resiliency grant that we're looking at right now that is up to six and a half million dollars of funding. Um, there is a wa- a series of water smart grants that we're also looking at to, determining if we have projects. So I've been contacting our grant writer to determine how and when we can utilize some of that funding. And so we can utilize some of that to, um, offset and increase our, our, our water tank at Sweetwater. We're getting some nail lining, continuing to pipeline some of the upper ditch. So we have a numerous, numerous, uh, I never had option to, to utilize those that funding.
If you have other. Input, I'll now open this to the public. Cherie.
Um, the Water Smart is at a state, um, federal because our program's called Water Smart, do a plan.
It's very confusing. It'd be a lot. It's a United States Bureau of Reclamation Program and they have multiple grant funding, uh, fundings underneath Water Smart. So some of them are water efficiency, energy efficiency. They also do, um, infrastructure, uh, and they do. Uh, marketing brands. They do all kinds of different brands to help with, uh, water and. It's, it's a whole, uh, that's why you hear a lot of Water Smart and that's typically always the bureau.
And then the other one is.
Uh, it's also the bureau, but it's called, uh. I can't remember the exact, it's, it's to build resilience in your community, uh, adding new facilities that can. Long, create long-term storage or, uh, increase efficiency through longer lens.
There's no more public comment. I'll now close the public comment forum. You know, further comment will be allowed. Uh, Nicholas, get any comments? Any board members want to comment on any of the reports? Moving on to. Action item eight A. Review and accepting annual financial report for the year ending June thirtieth. And we have a guest speaker, Nicholas.
Yes, we have David Alveney, Alvin, excuse me, online, on the line. He is from Bates Associates. Um, and so he is the person who conducted our audit. So I'll let him, uh, pop in. There's a brief presentation he will give in regard to our audit. And, um, at the end, he will have, uh, questions. And um at the end, you will have uh question, any answer period. David, um just pulling up your presentations, though, you can take it away as soon as you see it.
Great, thank you so much.
Now go back to. And then you can save everything you put on your screen there, be sure, so just click here in the corner.
I can also share my screen if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we're pulling it up right now, sorry about that.
No problem. There we go, perfect, thank you for pulling that up, Elizabeth. Good afternoon, President McDonald and members of the board, uh my name is David Alvy. I'm the audit partner for Georgetown Divide Public Utilities District. And I'm just gonna go over the uh the independent audit report and some of some highlights of the financials, next slide, please. So the audit itself um is conducted by an independent outside firm. And that's my firm Maze and Associates, and we are independent from the district, so that means we have no. Um relationships, no loans, no anything like that between my firm and the district, so we can give an honest opinion, and my job is to come in. Audit the the financials and render a report of whether or not those financials are free from material misstatement due to fraud or error. And when we're doing these audits, we have to conduct them a certain standard, so the audit you have in front of you today is conducted with auditing standards uh generally accepted. United States government auditing standards and the results, I'll just go back one more slide, please. Go back one more or. Yep, right there, so the results of the audit is, I'm pleased to say, is on page one of the audit report, is an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion. That's the highest level assurance that a CPA firm can give an entity, so congratulations, you you passed your your audit. We do have one um. Uh paragraph in our audit opinion, um it's called a change in accounting principle, and this comes up every time there's a new. Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncement change, like when the pension got put on the books with Gatsby sixty eight, and then the other post-employment happened. With Gatsby seventy five, we have a new one this year, it's called Gatsby eighty seven, and it has to do with how the district records um its leases and to. Furthermore, the four cellphone tower leases you have, how that lease revenue and then an offsetting deferred inflow need to be recorded, so that's new this year. Next slide, please. So just gonna go over some financial highlights, really high level really quick, so on the statement of net position, that's on page thirteen and fourteen. Um the district ended the year with eighteen point seven in net position, now that was a little bit of a decrease of one point seven million from last year. And a lot of that decrease has to do with, not only like I said, that new uh deferred inflow. Um for the lease, as a result of Gatsby eighty seven, but also it's kind of been a really weird year and you will. We'll see one more weird year with the pension, um just with the swings in the market as they happened over the last couple of years. You gotta remember that your pension valuation date was June thirty twenty twenty, so these things are. Um are swinging back and forth and it'll hopefully even out here in a little bit, so your net pension liability decreased. By one point eight million, but the deferred inflows related to the pension went up by three point seven. Next slide. So looking at the statement of revenues, expenses and change in that position, so your expenses for the year were eight point one, and that exceeded your revenues. Of six point three million, so you had a reduction from your net position from uh June thirty twenty twenty one to June thirty twenty twenty two. Of one point seven million, your operating revenue uh decreased. Four hundred and fifteen thousand from last year, and a lot of it has to do with decrease um due to the COVID, but also the uh SB nine nine eight, the penalties. For example, those dropped by a hundred and thirty two thousand from last year, and then also was a small decrease in. Residential water sales that dropped by around twenty or two hundred and sixty six thousand or around eight percent. Your um operating expenses increased by one point eight million or thirty, oh, I got a. Dollar center, thirty percent, and mostly that's Gatsby related, um to put in a perspective, when we did the Gatsby sixty eight adjustment. And the uh Gatsby seventy five for your pension and your other post-employment benefits, that hit. Uh admin expense for about two million dollars, and again, that's not a cash. Uh movement or anything like that, so from a budgetary standpoint, that's not an issue, it's more of a financial reporting uh issue. Uh for that standpoint, your non-operating in uh income decreased by six hundred and seventy one thousand. And a lot of that had to do with one-time money received uh in twenty twenty one for uh one-time transfer of water to the Westlands. In twenty twenty one, and then there was some interest on the State Water Resource Control Board loan for the Auburn Lake Trail. Uh water treatment plant. Next slide. So with the financials, um we're also required to issue a memorandum on internal control and a required communication, so this is also kind of known as the management letter. Um so I'm pleased to say that uh we don't have any material weaknesses to report out. We do have one significant deficiency uh having to do with journal entries, and I'll go into just a little bit of detail, but. With journal entries, especially with anything that there has to be segregation of duties, we we never want a. Position where one person can initiate, review and book a transaction without anyone reviewing that. When we sampled our journal entry, we found three out of a sample of twenty five that one person essentially went all the way through. And so that's why we have to bring it up, and I have been in discussion with staff and it's already been corrected, so non, non-issue now. And then in other matters, all we have are upcoming Gatsby pronouncements, so the next one is Gatsby ninety six. That's gonna be having to do with subscription-based IT arrangements, and I'll work with staff on, um if that's gonna be applicable to the district or not. The third document you have is the required communication, now this is my communication to this board of. Of issues or problems that we found during the audit, and I'm pleased to say we had no disagreements with management. We had no issues with the accounting estimates or assumptions used by management, a lot of that has to do with the pension and the other post-employment benefits. Along with even like depreciation and useful life and those kind of assumptions. And we have no reason to believe that our scope in our audit was limited, and we don't think that management had a second firm. Um or was seeking a second firm to issue a uh different opinion if they didn't like our opinion that we issued. Then last slide. And with that, I'd just like to open up to any questions you might have, and thank Jessica, Stephanie and Louis for all the help. And just let you know that we have the June thirty twenty twenty three audit already scheduled in early October or mid-October, so we'll. Get back on track and have this issued much earlier next year.
Possible action would be accept the annual financial report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
We have to open it up for board. So the finance committee recommended that we accept the uh the audit as presented with no changes.
Yeah, the finance committee, they have any questions, concerns or anything?
We did discuss the 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 uh pension that he brought up and. We uh let them know that that was something that was an issue and they did bring up an issue with it. We explained it to them the same as we met with uh US board members and it's the same way uh Mr. Uh Elvery, Abe. Alvy has explained it to you and and they had no issues with it.
And it's across the board, I'm seeing this at all my districts, all my, even my, all my municipal clients.
Is it optional at this point, based on what you talked about, the public or comment or the?
So it's up to you, the board.
So one question I had was the um, well, I have many questions, but one is on the um. Pension liability, I know that's one of the new Gatsby changes, uh was that actual money that we uh. Used or is that based off of the change in the percentage?
It's it's based based off an actuary report for basically uh promises that the district made today for employees both current and past. What that is gonna look like in terms of payout over a long period of time, so no, it is not a outflow of funds, um you do have your monthly. Pension payments and stuff like that, and those tend to fluctuate and go up as the market doesn't yield the. Uh discount rate that the actuaries are projecting out, but um what you see in that net pension liability is a projection out, not actual dollars out.
So that's like the unfunded liability, is that um, is that put into our overall budget, is that taken out of that?
I don't believe that's part of your budget budget process, cause it's not really a annual thing.
That didn't show up as a subtraction from our um in the cost.
No, it shouldn't show up, the liability shouldn't, just your your annual payments.
Right, and then there was a. One area, I don't know if you have a. The ability to break down our administrative claims expensive hydroelectric, I know our CIP projects were added in a. For admin expenses or the question, uh the gauges, the urban order management plan, the. We have for the parking lot, the Walton Lake generator, so all of those are put in as expenses, however, they're given on. It's not programmed to be expanded out of the budget, and I don't see uh the offset of the. Transfers from the reserves or the grants to offset it, so it just makes it more negative. And we don't have that offset in there in the budget.
I'll let him take the question, but I think you may have an answer to.
Uh, Mr. Well. Good.
No, go ahead, Mr. Alvy.
Okay, so no, um I can give you a breakdown of what's in that administration and hydroelectric, like I said, within there, um. What really skewed it this year was that Gatsby sixty eight piece for about two million dollars. But really what that is, is just all your salaries and benefits, uh vehicle maintenance, professional services, audit, um. But if you want a detailed breakout, I, we can provide that.
And I think to answer another part of your questions, we have, we provide a management overview of those CIP funds and the projects that we completed. And so that's part of that as well, and it explains the dollar amounts for the CIP, they're still expenses, they still come out of the budget, however. They they explain which ones are CIP and which ones are not.
And then the other one I just Jessica answered, cause the smud fund payment wasn't in the audit and she uh provided that.
Yeah, we didn't get it in time.
So it's gonna be on our next uh audit and backed up that way.
It'll, it'll actually be. The similar to the. How this part of this. Fund looks, they're gonna take and accept it, but then they're also gonna back it out and show that it goes back to that previous year as well.
All right, and then with a discrepancy on the memorandum of internal control, so is that uh. Still going to stay going forward that there was a problem with the review or has that changed now?
So we have addressed that in-house internally, that it is multiple hands touching those as opposed to. One pre- previous to my arrival, the general manager was making and approving all the journal injuries. Entries, excuse me, and that was the internal controls issue, and so now we have Jessica making journal entries in our. Audit, our accountant approving those journal entries to ensure that there's multiple eyes, and that's not just a blanket, I can approve anything that I want to. So that is our, that is how we how we address that situation.
Is that some internal policy?
It's part of the Gatsby, probably, it's legally, it's legal, it's a legal policy.
And that was before the manager as well, so there was no second person.
Yeah, it was not anybody who's currently on staff that caused any of those problems.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, is there something?
Not internally, not from us legally, but from the state of California and from the federal government. Yeah, we don't have any. Yeah, Gatsby is governmental accounting standards for. And so they, the policy.
Yeah, and actually the COSO guidelines are the ones that really establish that management has to uh establish a system of internal controls to. To uh detect things like this and to make sure that there are proper segregation duties.
Which are often Gatsby, I know the last time we had the one we had in the internal controls to pay tax, so this was another one. At least we have more um more staff, but in Laffco, we just have an executive officer and assistant, so. The board is also part of the internal control, cause there's not enough people that. I will wait for any further questions.
I got quite a few, actually, uh first of all, why is a purse liability put as an expense when other liabilities aren't? Why is purse take, take precedence over say our liability for the loan? Uh for ALT and that sort of thing, and you know, why, why is it all of a sudden being considered an expense? Expenses to me are 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 have been expended, money's been expended, and so this. Putting this in there as an expense just throws everything out of lack as far as is where we're at. At the end of the year, on the audit, as far as how much money we have left over from that.
Mr. Alvy, you go comment, yeah?
I I really don't have a comment on that because that's what Gatsby says we have to do and how we have to report it, so essentially that. Expense side of it um would be the difference between year over year of your deferred inflow and outflows in your net pension liability. So that's where it has to hit in that expense, and it is hard and it's slightly frustrating that we have to follow these guidelines. Um but I get that a lot where we don't like that it's skewing our expenses, and the only thing I can say, if you want to uh. For the general public, you could um. You can update the management discussion analysis, that's the first couple pages of the report to break out that. And so that at least the general public can see that this is a reporting requirement, not truly a outflow of cash.
What I think if I can add for that, if we could also have a report with that taken out, because we have that same problem with Laffco where. Impacts what we have to provide the agencies, because that liability was put there as an expense. Would show that we didn't have the same amount of money that we needed to require for the agencies to pay. So we had to have a clean one that showed our actual income and expenses, so we could provide to the agencies, this is how much they needed to pay, so. I don't know if it's possible to get a clean one that's doesn't have the liability in it, so it shows our actual income, uh expense.
Probably be going against the whole Gatsby thing.
No, this is a separate one, so we have our Gatsby report in there, we have a second one that shows this is a non-Gatsby one.
The thing I don't understand is that with the Gatsby, with that amount in there, it it shows us it being one point four million, yes, and.
Yeah, we're not really negative, we're negative on paper because we have this liability that's over a longer period of time.
So it's something we can ignore, I don't understand why it's even part of the. Of the report, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me, this, cause what we need to know. And what the public needs to know is, okay, here's how much revenue we took in, how much we expended, this is how much we have left that goes towards CIP. And that sort of thing, so having this Gatsby thing in there just shows that, you know, we're in the hole, one point four million.
We spent a couple of days trying to figure out where that came from, so not only the public, but the board to know right out of the gate. These are liabilities, these are true expenses.
There has to be, uh I understand we have to follow Gatsby and that sort of thing, but there there has to be. A realistic, you know, or or what what's real and what is just. You know, on paper.
David, is there a way of of having you work up the number and we put that as an addendum? That is without those those liabilities in there legally?
I mean, wh- what I would recommend you do is possibly, um and this could be like a next year thing, is we'll make a separate line item. Rather than burying it in the admin and hydroelectric, we'll make a separate line item as pension expense. Um and if we're gonna go that route, I would do it for the other post-employment, the OPEB as well, so you could just basically strip out those two numbers and see. But it's 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 very similar to like any other non-cash item on your financials, like depreciation, for example, that's. A non-cash item that's on there as well, a not a fake expense, but an expense that you're amortizing over the course of the useful life of your capital assets. So I mean, really, realistically, you know, a budget report would probably be more applicable to show the general public like and have actuals. So you can actually see how you're doing compared to a budget. And within a budget, you wouldn't have these Gatsby sixty-eight or seventy-five adjustments.
Okay. Since you brought up the hydro, what what expense do we have for hydro?
Uh, for admin.
Well, you've got you've got admin and hydro tied together. As an expense item, I don't understand what the expense, what those two have to do with.
Well, we still do administrative costs internally to for the hydro. So we have billings and we have invoicing for the hydro. And so those are the expenses that we have. We get money back. Do we still have to do work to get that money?
Oh, okay. So it's basically a not insignificant, but a minor amount.
It is a very minor.
I see the copy of it and remember moving forward when you do get the contracts that switch when we are in. If you know, that's another reason to keep it on.
Well, when we do have, yeah.
We'll have a serious change.
Okay, and why would there, why was there a million dollar decrease in revenue? I mean, that was during COVID, wasn't it? And was it all these people at home? And there was even discussion held about using so much more water.
That is correct. And most of that went through the accident process.
The what?
We were not able to collect or shut anybody off, so we received far less revenue during the COVID period.
A million dollars worth?
I would say that's probably about right.
Wow, I didn't realize that it was that much. Okay. I get outside the notes on here. Yeah, revenue increase with so many people take care of their six to go. But six, what?
Stikies.
Okay, on this page ten, which is the management's discussion and analysis. Under there's an item that says other for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. It says one, two, three, four. Well, is that an actual number or was that something that it is an actual number?
Here's a comment.
No. Okay, I'd say an accurate number. Okay. All right, let's see. Okay, I think that ended to lies. Okay. Got that answered. Got that answers. Knock it off.
I just found two more.
I switched colors on you and messed you up, didn't I? Get one out of post-it notes. I go around the house and find another piece of the tablet. On this page twenty-six, it says cash investments. It says cash on hand as of June thirtieth was four hundred fifty bucks.
That's petty cash.
Yeah, that's physical cash in the office.
Oh, not cash in the in the bank. Yeah, I'm saying a lot more trouble than I thought. Okay, so that's petty cash.
That's a petty cash.
That would be the good thing. This is cash on hand.
That's all we have.
That's a minimal term for it.
Or. All right.
Makes the cash store plus petty cash.
Let's see. Okay, these these leases that you have in here, what's the, I know there's a mention about cell towers, which kind of surprised me. What's this AT&T lease? Four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars.
The cell phone internet.
They're paying us.
They have towers on all our tanks.
We're getting four hundred thirty-six thousand a year for that.
Thirty-five grand a month.
No, so with Gatsby ninety, sorry, Gatsby eighty-seven, we have to look over the entire life of the lease agreement. So if they pay you seventeen fifty-five a month and it's a fifty-year lease, we need to pull those dollars back to present value and then book that receivable.
Okay. So what you look at there is the twelve thousand. You see, it says twelve thousand in the first column, monthly revenue as of June thirtieth. So that's what we see as a real number for every year for leases. We don't see four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars for leases. It's not thirty-five thousand every month. We only get.
Well, I took these to be like separate leases, like you got Calmate is the twelve thousand.
Yeah, but you had to look at the third, the third column, the fourth column over, not the third, not the last column. He's saying that that's the total lease agreement, four hundred thirty-six thousand. So we get seventeen hundred a month.
Oh, the monthly revenue.
So if you look at it, it's about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year approximately, probably a little more.
Oh, okay. So this is till the till the end of the lease, what you're saying.
The the very last column, which is six twenty-three zero five nine. That is that is the total lease payment.
Okay.
And you have to remember, this is two fiscal years ago now. Yeah, so it's more now.
I might remember.
I'm just trying to keep up with how many pages you're turning over. It's like this.
Three, three zickies.
This was this was spent darn near a whole day.
This is dedication to the commit, the community.
This is doing my job.
This is what I'm saying.
Yep.
I think you need to be back on the finance committee.
Is your battery on the review? All right. Okay, actually, this is, I forget what that was. Okay, I think. Yeah, I found that. Okay, and the internal control issues you guys took. Okay.
Okay. Dirk Chova?
I don't have any. No way. It's just little typos there and there.
Yes.
Remember when we got that money back from the county? That was this last fiscal year, not this one.
Are you talking about the smud money?
Smud?
Yeah, so that.
The one where somebody retired and
Yes, that's
That was the property taxes. But that was last fiscal year, not this.
Okay, I was just wondering when that.
But smud, we did receive a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for this audit fiscal year. But it was after the audit was almost complete.
So it's gonna screw things up a lot next audit.
I wasn't gonna start changing the books while he was doing.
It wasn't so much screw things up. He'll he'll basically take it, he'll mark it as an expense, but he'll also recalculate it back to this fiscal year. So he'll Yeah, he'll say it was paid in this. Yeah.
So are we going to get? I think like like Mike requested, we're going to get a revised report that has the Gatsby stuff broken out and separated.
Up to you. If you want to, if we wanted to break that out as a separate line item, I'm fine with doing that.
Okay, we can approve it and have him send that over to us still with that comment.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, we can have him make that sheet for us.
Okay. That would be greatly appreciated.
I think that Mr. Alvey has received the direction that that regarded.
There's some comments to finish it out. So as you can see, the pension liability, that was one of the things we talked about. The next step in our investments is to have a trust for the pension liability. So that'll give us some coverage from those law swings. So that's going to be what I have to do. And we're fortunate our pension liability is only four million. At one time it was at ten million. So it's uh, these are some of the wild swings we're seeing.
So we'll keep setting it aside. Maybe it'll go down to about one million.
But that has nothing to do with the audit we're talking about.
Well, it does because of it, because the other thing that we saw with a decrease in revenue, which so a lot of the things that we see now is he's doing the audit again. So for the next audit, if we can remember to do the same thing where we're taking out that lines for the pension liability and the other stuff. So you can see it. And the other thing is we also are going to have to look at the state mandates and the water conservation because that's impacting our revenue as well. So we're seeing that eight to ten percent to twenty percent that will reduce and is also affecting the revenue, which is problematic. And I don't know when when you can apply the state mandates for constitutionally avenue for money back. It may be problematic. They'll be, they'll be a lot.
Time you want me to go with that battle, tell me now.
There'll be a lot, but yeah, other than that. So I think that addressed the some of the changes we saw with is based on the pension liability, I think, and the leases and the other guy, the stuff that CIP projects. So I think once we take that all out and have that, you can see what I did with it.
So for some more board comment, I'll open this up to the public before it comes back to the board prior to vote. Go ahead.
On page forty-three, the post-employment benefit, where it states, the first paragraph, the benefits for the few funded representatives and management employees as of April eleven, two thousand six. And then it refers to ordinance two oh six six oh one. Then it states that no new employees are getting this benefit that as of two thousand six, that's page forty-three. I don't understand. We don't have the ordinance, so I don't know what it states. Does anybody know that? What that mean?
The PPA, we're having to change the.
Is that when we went to you? I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't sure.
That when we went to Pepper?
No, Pepper was thirteen.
You knew this, yeah, around.
David, do you have a?
That was from prior year report, and I thought that was just an internal policy. I'll have to work with staff on that one.
We can get you an answer.
Yeah, I'll look at the ordinance.
All just for having the answer.
Good job.
No.
Any more follow-up? Nichols?
I do not. There is no bad line either.
Okay. Any more comments from the board? Okay, this time I'd like to ask for a vote for acceptance of the annual finance report for year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two with the addendum to add the additional commentary summarizing a breakdown of the liabilities and expenses and.
There is line that will there is liabilities.
Well, all the Gatsby.
All the Gatsby.
Gatsby.
You have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion when we accept it.
All in favor? I, motion passes unanimously.
Make sure it has to oppose.
Opposed. Opposed. None opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight B, operating reserve transfer for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and reserve fund analysis. And the possible action we order to determine transfer amount of funds to one hundred or to one eleven and or a modified reserve fund policy for board approvals. From the others eighty days to one fifty or one twenty.
Yes, thank you. So this is something that typically happens much earlier in the year. Unfortunately, due to the late audit, we wanted to wait until the audit was finalized and we were able to receive all of the information before we made this recommendation to the board. You can see the three options. Currently, we are sitting at a hundred and eighty days of reserve, and that stems from much of the COVID situation that was discussed during the audit of the lack of revenue. So it was recognized that people were taking advantage of the situation and were were not paying their bills as they were required because of whatever reason. And potentially, they had lost their position, potentially had they had less funds and say water bill not coming in in regular amount that they they worked. So the district increased its reserve from one hundred and twenty days to one hundred and eighty days. It was, excuse me, there was options to be in there. So we included all three options of going back to one hundred and twenty days, increasing or going back to one hundred and fifty days and then staying at the one hundred and eighty days. If you look in the staff report, you can see what it would mean as a surplus transfer into our CIP program. So if it's a hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-day reserve, it's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of surplus that we can transfer. A hundred and fifty days, it's basically negligible or about five thousand dollars to the negative. And a hundred and eighty, we would have to take money out of our investments to put into our one hundred and eighty-day reserve policy. This this item was seen by the finance committee and they selected option number one. Staff's position is, I believe, either option number one or option number two. But I would like to open it up at this point to discussion by the board. It is staff's opinion that one hundred and eighty days is excessive at this point because we do not have the COVID restrictions anymore, and we are not seeing the lack of payments. And we're actually receiving the the tax liens and the overages coming back into the district. So this is not as critical of an issue to have a longer operating reserve as we did in the past.
Yes, for clarification, what's the nomenclature for funds one hundred and one eleven?
One eleven is CIP, one hundred is our general, our water fund.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to add, even though when we did the one hundred eighty day and the one hundred fifty, we had the compromise. Each time those were done by resolution and you have a board policy which still has that one hundred and twenty days. So if we did choose any of the other options, it would automatically require us to do a policy amendment of the reserve policy. So that's just the one thing I'd bring up, but.
So you're saying if we go to anything besides one hundred and twenty days?
Yes.
So good.
But yeah, that was the thing we were asking for the last two cycles. So now that staff recommends that we are fine with our budget and we don't have to worry about the payments coming in. And Alan is back up to date with paying us, going back to our policy of one hundred twenty-day reserve, I think, is the reasonable option to stay there. And the other thing I want to bring up, so here is looking to the future is to we have to look at our reserve policy because it is still missing minimum levels. So that's one of the things we want to be able to also protect is where there's minimum levels built in. So don't be able to load that to put us at risk.
And I know that's one of the policies that I plan to bring in the next one to two weeks to the policy committee.
We're saying that if it's if it's a one hundred and thirty days.
Seven thirty.
Oh, yeah, no.
Saying if it's at one hundred and twenty days, we don't need to change the policy.
Correct.
And right now it's at one.
It's at one eighty.
It's at one eighty, right.
Did we?
We changed it by resolution, which is, I mean, there was an emergency situation with COVID. So it made sense to do that, but moving forward, you would have to change the policy.
Okay. Any other?
The struggle? Yeah, I did some analysis due to my concerns around El Nino, which really wasn't built into our whole budget process. And so what I did is I went back to the actual expenses. Of two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, in the last El Nino. And according to the California Coastal Commission, they said on a statewide basis, the rainfall during the two thousand fifteen, sixteen was unexceptional, slightly above normal. And then also, they said, because of the current El Nino event, it may cause extreme storm condition. Property owners and communities may wish to take steps to add temporary protection to prevent damage in winter. To kind of piggyback on what Adam was just saying, that the up-country status of the roads and everything is currently changing. There's a lot of risk and that he's currently focusing on high-risk area. He discussed road mitigation, looking at putting rocks on the roads. And while the costs associated with this may be covered through FEMA and litigation, we basically got to come up with the upfront costs. So what I did is looked at those percentages and costs that were incurred in two thousand sixteen, fifteen and sixteen over what the budget was for those years and sources of supply, transmission of raw water and transmission treatment. And basically came up that that time, there was basically a half a million dollars spent on those areas that were not in that budget. It was. my prerogative to kind of look at that and multiply it by three times the percentage rate due to the possible mitigation that is involved with the fire. So when I look at those hard numbers, trying to base an opinion on fact of what we should have in reserves in the middle there that says potential added expense related to El Nino equals about a ninety day reserve. So it's my opinion that we should go with, uh, the middle option, the option, um, one fifty. Option two of a hundred and fifty days, based on that analysis.
Can I add some color? I think you may be analyzing that a little bit backwards. So we're having to expend things. We want to have more free cash so that we can spend it. And so that would give us that the hundred and twenty day option. That's not operating revenue. Operating revenue is our, our normal bills. This is, this is C I P or, or surplus extra money that we need to spend. And so we wouldn't want to go to one hundred and fifty days. If you want to be able to spend one point three million dollars, we would want to have more free cash that's not locked up in operating reserve.
I'm not quite following.
So, so operating reserve is, is we have to keep X number of dollars in the bank
Right.
to cover normal operating expenses. This is not normal operating expenses, what you presented to us. This is abnormal operating expenses. So we need to have more free cash that's not locked up into an operating reserve. For normal expenses, we need to have abnormal money. And that's where the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes in. We want to have that as free cash, being able to spend it and not having it locked up into operating reserve.
Okay, Director Seaver?
And then there was one other, uh, and so I also just want to add one thing as color. So you're looking at the budget from fifteen, sixteen and some of the overages. Um, so when we did our budget for this year, we also are anticipating some of these as costs. So we have budgeted for some of this, not all of this, but um, some of this has been included in our budget that we knew we're going to have additional expenses from both the fire mitigation erosion. And so some of these costs are included in the current operating budget.
And my point was, is that when we looked at, or when I looked at the budget, um, I wasn't expecting, looking at it, I'll need your year when the finance committee was looking at this last spring.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is you're looking at, um, the fifteen, sixteen budget. And so in the current budget, we have different expenses than this. And so some of those are already accounted for. So those higher numbers that you're looking at, those percentages of higher numbers, it's already accounted for in the budget.
Director Seaver?
And if you remember looking at previous budgets and I know every budget I've looked at since I've been on the board, uh, we've had this ongoing problem of the budgets just rolling over and not really checking and balancing like what we have today. Um, they were just sort of slumped. Um, where we had over a hundred and some thousand dollars in office supplies just for paper and other associated things, which really had no basis. So now that we've got a budget that's a pretty much a real budget with real numbers and supporting documentation for that budget, I think we are now looking at, you know, um, it's easier to see that these are real, that wasn't real. And it's been going on for years and years like that.
Thank you, Director Seaver. For clarification. Director Saunders?
The, at any time, if we need to, we can always transfer money out of, say, C I P in order to cover the operations. So, um, and what Nick is saying is, is that would be if we tie up more money in and, and label it as being operating reserves, then that takes away the availability of use that money that is sitting in the C I P. You see what I'm saying?
So what you're saying is that if there is a need up country, we can take money out of the C I P.
Absolutely. We can, we can make a transfer.
That's my concern is that we have much available
Right.
to mitigate the potential effects of the upcoming coming.
Right.
And that is what we, um, Adam and I, Adam discussed during his office manager, according Director Saunders brought up that he wants to see a C I P amendment. And so we're looking, we're waiting for you to get those bids. We, we have estimates of cost, but we wanted to have solid numbers before we come in and we can do a C I P amendment. Um, with some of the grants that are coming in, there are C I P projects that we will not likely be able to complete this year just due to manpower. And, um, so we will, we could take, uh, those projects and remove those and we can include those as part of this funding.
Okay.
Thank you. That was what I was going to add. That was the reason I brought up the C I P amendment because that also will include our emergency reserves. So we do have emergency reserves that will cover something that's above the, yeah, the funding people. So we do have some emergency funds. And then by adjusting our C I P, we can remove some projects which we think may not be essential, or can we move forward to make sure that we can deal with the fire mitigation de-erosion, to make sure that we have water coming down in good quality. So.
Thank you. Open it up to the public? Comment?
And we are.
Yeah. Fun transfer.
I have shot.
Yeah. It'll come back. It'll come back to us for final comment.
No, I think a hundred and twenty days should be sufficient.
Stay with us, Marie.
Hang in there, hang in there. Okay, so if there's no more public comment, we'll close the public comment section. And, uh, board?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, make it a hundred and twenty days.
Second?
Which means they'll C I P about four hundred grand.
Four hundred and fifty eight thousand eight seventy eight.
There you go.
Wait, four hundred and forty nine thousand one twenty six.
Okay.
The surplus, just checking. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? None opposed? Vote is unanimous. Most in pass.
You got it up there.
Yeah. Uh, uh, here we go. Section C approval of vehicle purchase, possible action to approve the purchase of new and potentially used vehicles not to exceed four million.
Okay, um, I'm gonna just kind of tee this one up. I'll let Adam, um, um, take most of this, um. I have some information that I wanted to present to the board that is, I believe, important. So I had a, a meeting with CARB staff and did some research on the, our uh, policy that we've been discussing in several board meetings and learned some pretty important information. I was always under the understanding that this was for any vehicles because it does include light duty, medium duty and heavy duty in the, in the leg, in the, uh, legislation. However, uh, anything that is less than sixty five hundred ground vehicle weight or, uh, sixty five hundred pounds of, of total vehicle does not count in these restrictions. So that would, uh, exclude, um, all of the light duty trucks, the half ton trucks. At eighty five hundred and above is when these start to take effect. And so that would be our medium duty and heavy duty trucks. So a medium duty truck for us would be anything that is a three fifty, F three fifty or thirty five hundred up to an F five fifty or fifty five hundred. Um, and then any heavy duty trucks that would encompass our dump trucks and anything along those lines. So, um, I had originally planned to come to this meeting asking to purchase a few of the half ton trucks. However, with this new information, I don't feel it is as important to purchase half ton trucks right now. But I would like to propose, and I'll let Adam continue on, uh, an up to amount of asking for, uh, I'll let him go over the numbers. It's, I believe, a hundred thousand and ninety thousand is what we've looked at for specific vehicles. Now, I hate to keep saying this because kind of angers me, but because of the supply chain shortages due to COVID and everything else that we're dealing with in the world nowadays, it is very, very difficult to get trucks, um, to order a new truck with a utility bed on it. It is two years out. And that does us no good, uh, in today's day and age. Um, but there are specific dealers who sell these trucks already equipped with beds. And so, um, what we're asking for today is an authorization to spend up to an amount of money to purchase these trucks. And so that's just kind of go into this Adam's presentation, thinking about that, that we're not ordering trucks. We're going to actually go out and then look at a lot and we're going to more or less pay with a check. Cause that is the only way to get these trucks right now. So, Adam.
Yeah. Um, so I'll do a quick summary of the, our fleet right now. We have ten light duty, three medium duty and one heavy duty truck. Um, and we're, you know, kind of going through different structures and maybe talking about the advanced fleet, um, clean air act, um, the vehicle availability and just the, the challenges where, you know, we're seeing. Uh, but, you know, I kind of thought originally going to do would be a lot, a lot simpler and a lot easier to do in a bike truck. You know, you know, but it was turning out a little more difficult, especially once you get into the, um, the heavier class, medium duty and um, heavy duty like your, your, your ten wheelers or your five fifty or four fifty, um, trucks. So we have been, you know, recently been trying to really improve our, um, maintenance of these so we can have these, have these lawyers in our, in our tracking. And now we're using that goes along with our asset management software. We've implemented in the last few, few months here is weekly vehicle inspection. So I know we've, I've seen the way, you know, this position now some um, trucks probably haven't been, um, noticed as much as they should. So we're trying to correct that. So we can move it forward when we get these new vehicles. We're going to get a lot, a lot more youth, a lot of the longer units and hopefully the maintenance costs to stay down on those. And that includes, you know, the work at the asset management software, um, electronic work orders. I know the electronic work order has been around for a couple of years now. But before, and you know, we were doing paper manuals that come in each time, bigger work that we're about to do. Now it's, you know, electronic. We can do almost anything. Uh, we also have our vehicle tracking. So all that combined, really improving our efficiency to lower the mileage and really focus on, you know, instead of, you know, making extra trips across the divide. Not only maintenance on the vehicles, but also just fuel costs and everything that goes along with that. We're trying to be more efficient, um, with our tasks. It's, it's hard sometimes, you know, because like you mentioned, you know, we have a big service area limited, a small fleet, um, our, we go from a thousand feet to four two hundred feet. A lot of our roads are, I mean, you guys do up here and drive up there, you know how they are. They're not, they're not good. We're towing a lot, we're a lot of different brakes all over the place. So it's still a challenge. What we can do, we know we just, we're trying to. Um, so we kind of said, like Nick talked about, like the vehicle, I think we're kind of eyeing and holding off on those for right now. And we're probably sending heavy duty. So on the second page of staff report, I kind of outlined, um, what our research dog sets, since the budget period, um, to figure out, you know, what's available, what we can get, what we can't get. Um, so typically, you know, in the past, we did like, yeah, like a fourth wall, where you have a, a vendor that supplies like a, a quote that comes right from the factory. We just did it with, that's how we purchased with Claris. Um, you know, we bought it right from the factory. That's how I was doing it. Um, so now they don't have, the availability is just, um, the dirt is not there. So like, what I do in the, in the, what I do, we can't get, they're there for the two thousand twenty three model, two thousand twenty four is not out yet. But yeah, two thousand point three is not, um, two thousand, two thousand twenty four have not been released, but word is, you know, you're to have to two years before, or the, when they are released, we would actually see them. And our vehicles, you know, like I described, our terrain and different aspects, that's pretty good. They, they wear it out. Um, for example, like, um, unit thirty five, you know, it's, it's a rooftop again, as another second delay, it has iron in it. It is not exactly sure why, um, we can try and figure that out when you're in the name. Um. So yeah, so there's all this challenging where we use them every day. It's, it's kind of, they're kind of really critical in operation here. Uh, we try to keep those. We can even invest in it as we can and you're replaced when we can. Um, so kind of proposing is, uh, medium duty and heavy duty. And medium duty is a, uh, five fifty, so it's a ten and a half, um, utility truck. Um, that would be used for, um, distribution, which could be all the way back there or the excavator. Um, and then the current truck we have there, we have F three fifty, which isn't, it's big enough to tow, but not tow the ditch, which when it's full of material from a break or some sort, we were kind of wanting to transfer that to the maintenance side. So it has a more utility bed, taking all the smaller excavator for, um, ditch projects, um, it's a little bit lighter, so a little more feasible there. Um, so we'd be looking to purchase one of those in. So retail pricing, when I say retail pricing, that's basically from a dealer, um, there's, you know, there's future, future for the flooring, there's some downs out where we we still get it, we still, if they have them available, we still get a competitive price for each of them. So basically like quote. And then we, we go through that and find the best one that fits, fits our need. These basics, you know, it's four wheel drive, a utility bed, this is a little cabinet, that's kind of, that's kind of basically the needs, um, in the side, obviously. So that's party number one is finding that, that you see on the, the matrix down here. So a new one, you say, I'd rather see the hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, everything got a quote for, uh, ninety eight, uh, just a little bit of that. Um, and that would also include, if we can find a dump bed to replace the truck that's in the, the shop right now. Um, because again, that's a, it's a thirty five hundred one tons, um. It's, it's older, you know, that's fifteen year old now. So it does have, it struggled to also pull heavier equipment, um, with gravel and, you know, and some of the materials. So we'll use that. We'll go out, we'll have the bigger truck. Um, you know, seventeen, which had probably the fill, the fill material and then we use that someone's swell, the joint there, the dry swells and a lot of those swells into the, the ditch with. Um, you know, and it's, it's just, it's a little underpowered for, um, for up here. Um, and it also gives, we had a a smaller dump, it gives some flexibility, um, for some up country projects and the small heavy roads. And also some on, you know, smaller one lane roads, um, where our distribution system is. Um, and those, that those range, um, kind of, kind of laid out what they read, nine, nine, nine hundred and six, kind of, kind of, I mean, that's new. Um, I had one, it was a used one, um, it had about ten thousand miles on it, a year old, um, they were sold. So you know, it was, I think it was eighty five pounds. That was probably some reason why we did, we could do it. It was a fifty five hundred, uh, that was three or four yard dump. Um, so really what we're looking at is options for a medium duty, option two and option three would be new, under a hundred and ten thousand. Option, and option three would be used under a hundred thousand, uh, meaning those criteria is below, you know, under twenty five thousand miles and under two years of life. Um, that's a two for those two. And then moving on to, you know, obviously we did buy the dump, probably with surplus, um, you know, thirty five, we get it cleaned up and did that surplus. So we, I would estimate probably twenty to twenty five thousand for that truck, you know, locally or than it right now. You know, so we get for it. Um, so we're on the heavy duty. That's the larger dump truck. It's called Top Cave. It's a ninety one. Um, so it's, 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 it's seen its life, you know, I think we need to move on, move on from that as we can. Again, those are new, those I think it's out of our price range, you know, we're looking over two hundred thousand dollars for a ten wheeler. Um, so I think our option there is really only used. Um, again, I set criteria for that under two hundred and fifty thousand miles and seven years from the current year we're in. Um, they're out there. They're fine. They're a little challenging because of CARB rules. So if they don't have a lot of the ones that for sale, I use for sale, can't be sold back to California. Or if you can't, maybe sold to California, we can't register. So it's really just trying to find and search about, if you can find something little built, built there. It's, um, not only, there's a lot of them. Yeah, I talked to some dealerships. Again, we have some available. They're set up for highway, they're not set up for mountain roads. Um, so it's there's just some autonomy we need there to try to find something that fits our needs. Um, it's, it's difficult. Uh, basically order one, yeah, you order one, you know, be a couple of years for three hundred grand. So that, that's the challenge. Um, so that would, I would suggest option three with that, with, um, heavy duty one. And then if we are, you know, find something, it would begin surplus, um, you know, seventeen. Um, work from there. All, all in all, you know, would not exceed ten fifty thousand dollars, but we, we'll see.
David, clarification?
Well, can I just add a few things if that's okay before you clarify?
Sure.
Well, go ahead and clarify, please.
Yeah, I, the total of the used vehicles in option three comes to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, let me.
What am I missing?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to say.
Okay.
So, so he's trying to say is, is we want to buy one new vehicle that would be a fifty five hundred or equivalent. Uh, that has a utility bed. And so if you scroll to the, the, the page, uh, that shows the truck like in a room, that would be the truck we'd look for. And so this MSRP is about ninety three thousand. That'd be going where? That one right there.
I think I used some of that towards the interface.
Yeah. And then, um, the next page with the dump truck, we would look to purchase that used. And as Adam stated, we've found some for anywhere between eight and ninety. And as Adam stated, we've found some for anywhere between eighty and ninety thousand dollars. So um some of those are, they're within California. We found one like in San Diego, one was in Sacramento or. Oh, yeah. So they're they're all over, so we can take a real deep dive. We can also look at some auction sites, because those also are an option to pick up these used vehicles. Um, I looked at an auction site back in. April, May sometime period, and they were selling um some of the vehicles. I'm not sure if you're familiar with how. The vehicles didn't have computer chips and they were still making them and then they were waiting for the computer chips. And so now they installed the chips. And so they were selling these. New vehicles as used vehicles. Uh, they had like tens of miles on them, ten, twenty, thirty miles. But they couldn't sell them as new, so they were selling them as used at these auction sites. And so that's another option that we could go as well. I think what we're asking for is permission to purchase this utility bed truck, a light duty. Dump truck, so a medium duty dump truck. And if we were to come about one. In lieu of that, a a cheaper ten wheeler, which like Adam said, it's, we haven't really found one yet. So that's not really something we're looking for. Um, and so it's to be those two, replacing those two vehicles. And then uh we would have the ability to surplus the other vehicles out.
Yeah, so you know, you know, and if it, if it all happens, I think if it all can happen, they're ten or fifty thousand dollars. It's called timing and what we find.
And then just to to some color, I'm trying to see if we can work in the dump truck. The ten miller dump truck into the Cal Fair grants funds. I can guarantee that that I'll be able to do that. But due to the need to be able to move this equipment around, we may be able to to have that paid for by Cal Fire. So that's my goal, but I can't guarantee that.
My follow up was is uh uh to clarify, so that if we surplus it out, would that be in conjunction with the purchase price to. Come up two hundred and fifty thousand or below with the surplus?
With the surplus, yes. So so basically, we're looking at the thirty five hundred is probably worth between twenty twenty five. We kind of blue book the top kick. It's really difficult to blue book that because of the age of it. But anywhere between fifteen and twenty five for that. So we're looking at probably forty to fifty thousand dollars in vehicle asset that we have there. That we would like to include with the cost here. So two hundred and fifty thousand, and if we were able to surplus this vehicle, that we put that back into that surplus fund.
You you mentioned something about changing out a bed on one truck and putting it on another truck.
We're not changing beds, no. We're just gonna take the truck and move it to a different department, the whole truck.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Okay, that's not what I heard.
Heard some about beds too.
You're you're gonna change out a utility bed to put it on another truck so that it can be used as a maintenance truck.
Yeah, a whole truck. Sorry, we have an F three fifty and it's just not supposed to hold some of our trailers, so we want to move it over to a different maintenance, to the maintenance firm as opposed to treatment.
Okay, and then the government, um, I guess you've gone through Cal government contracting for um.
Yes, we've.
Trucks. And then have, if you've done that, then have you also gone to other agencies to see if you can piggyback on their contract? Because I know a lot of times you get on those big agencies and you can, they can add a truck in and you can pull that one that, one of them out.
So when we've looked at any of the new vehicles ordering anything, it's it's anywhere between a year and two years. To get anything ordered.
No, but that's what I'm saying. Have you talked to any of the others?
That's what I'm saying is is we have, and that's any of the, any of the things. So if you go to the page um that shows the the cabin chassis, which would be, where it says eighty two thousand dollars. So so we can get one of those and we can go buy one tomorrow. The the issue is getting the box, the one in the back. The boxes are out two years. So you just can't find them anywhere. And so you have to buy one that's already put together, um which would be the the.
Jacob, that one down in.
Yes, um. I don't know where that picture's from, but it's the. Yeah, so they build them, but they're they're so backlogged. Everybody, everybody's trying to order them. And so basically, you're in a queue that's a hundred. Trucks long.
I guess, I guess what I want to hear, yes, you've contacted, I know you have.
Yes, we have.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry.
I don't need all the reason, but yeah, it's a big contact. And there's also that truck place I was looking by um in Rockland, that's right on the highway.
They don't have the larger class. They have a lot of three nations. I thought about that.
Because I was like, oh, yeah, one A T, looking down the road and.
And it's something we're gonna do with with this authorization, is Adam and myself are going to do some due diligence and we're gonna shop around. We're not gonna. Oh, we found one, we're gonna buy this. We want to look for something, you know, as stated, the dump truck is a used vehicle. We don't think that we need a new one, but something that's twenty five thousand miles or less. That we can utilize here at the district, I think is is capable. And we're not looking for something older either.
And I get the cost effective, you know, uh your your fuel usage is gonna be better now and with the newer vehicle than the older vehicle. So that's a little bit of an offset of buying something newer from what we are getting rid of also.
Got to quit. Oh. With the purchase of new vehicles, your registration's gonna be higher, the insurance is gonna be higher, and um. Where where what where does the increased cost for buying new uh for licensing tax? You know, is this concluding sales tax and registration? I'm just.
So you figure, I think it's three percent on top of this?
See, yes, and sale taxes, I mean, that's just the cost, but the the registration, we're doing that from that.
And our insurance is all through J P A, so we can change, it's just based on that instead.
Yeah.
So you're looking to buy two trucks or three trucks?
Okay, so it's kind of confusing. We are looking at three trucks, but we likely will only end up with two.
Which two?
Yeah, ultimately, right now, we would like the two medium duty trucks. We don't believe that the ten wheel truck, it's going to be feasible right now.
Right.
And also, as I stated, I'm just gonna try to get the grant to pay for that. So I think that I have better options of getting that paid for other ways, or we come back and we try again later for that.
Okay, so I I'm uncertain as to why you need two hundred and fifty thousand to get two.
We likely will not. Um, you can authorize less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you can see what we're, what some of these are estimated at. Um, we are asking roughly for a hundred and ten for the new utility box truck and a hundred thousand for the dump truck. And I still don't think we'll spend that much. The flexibility of the two hundred and fifty thousand allows us to to shop around a little bit.
Okay, well, I would like to see it uh. Uh, what's what is specify what you're gonna buy?
We can't. That's what I'm trying to say.
No, 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 no. I mean, the type of truck. In other words, okay, you're gonna buy a utility truck and and a and a dump truck. Like an F five fifty type dump dump truck. Okay, and you're not gonna buy the ten wheeler. That's what I want to see.
We can do that today, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
That's that's what I would like to see.
So what I would, okay, then I would, I would request that we could purchase a fifty five or a a one and a half ton. Truck with a utility box on it. And a fifty five hundred with a dump, potentially new or used.
The utility is not gonna be a fifty five hundred?
Both of them will be fifty five.
Both only fifty five hundred. And that's because both of them are gonna be towing.
Well, one will be towing the back of trailer and one will likely be towing the new excavator that we're purchasing. With the grand money.
Okay. But that's what, so. That's how I would like to see.
We can, we can also explore um. Uh, once we get the new fifty five hundred dump truck, we can explore uh surplusing the top kick. And the thirty five hundred, see where we come with that funds. And after we make these purchases, if we're able to make them low enough. We may be able to come back and say, we have X number of dollars left in that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund, well, C I P. What's the surplus fund? I mean, we'll come back to the board for potentially looking at a ten wheeler or some other option. We may not need the ten wheeler. We're just, we're gonna continue to look at it.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that the two fifty is coming in not to exceed, right?
Not to exceed.
Okay, and and you're gonna do your absolute best to get it lower.
I'm, I don't want to spend ninety three thousand dollars on a trucker.
You definitely, neither would I.
No. I don't really want it. I'm prejudiced.
No.
I second that.
Sorry, I I I. You can't dodge them.
I can tug them out of the hole.
Well, it shows like the light duty vehicles, those are dodged about two years ago, three years ago, and they were twenty five, twenty eight now. They're up in forty five.
Yeah.
Yeah, but everything's like that.
So we're gonna keep looking, and like I said, we'll do do our due diligence.
Okay. What's the reality of renting the ten needle clear as needed?
We we have done that.
Yeah, yeah. We're kind of doing that now. We don't have any push, you know.
We know, we're not writing anything right now, but they are priced, they're about two hundred and a month. So.
As opposed to per job, it's.
Then we were basically being used to go pick up the rock and bring it here dumping, right?
We don't have a ten wheeler right now.
We had one rented.
You're having it delivered.
Yeah.
You're having it delivered.
Here.
Two here.
Yeah, and then we take smaller loads.
It's, I think, what, two fifty each time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that if we owned our own ten wheeler, we would offset that and we would do those deliveries on our own.
Right, but it would take.
It would take time, but you know, it would give us, it gives more options, because we know, we can throw a larger thing with a load. You know, we're not making as many. We do still take our top tip for the four and get rocks. If we're at a drop site, we need rocks. Sometimes it's closer to come back here and loading it. We'll stick it right there. Sometimes you're making two trips. Sometimes you're spoiling, you're making two trips up here. It's it's just, you know, larger bed, more towing capacity. Or if we do have the equipment coming down the line here, you know. Get more work coming up. We're we're trying to do, I mean, the last like three or four years, we're doing a lot more projects and now, you know, chimney flat. Line replacement, that's what we're trying to the truck for. We, I mean, we saved from, I'm going to a consult, we save or contract, we save fifty thousand dollars in that project. Right, and the lining we've been doing, we'd say it was seven hundred thousand and and have done fifteen hundred more feet over the time, you know, so.
Right.
I think, I think it's it's not, you know, that, put that in account to, you know. Make us more flexible.
Director Saunders.
So uh, there's some comments also, uh, like thanking uh Robert for uh his due diligence with the. La Nina stuff. This was the same thing. Uh, we've come a long way since I've been in the finance committee. When we were averaging nine hundred percent, uh, was the overage with maintenance from uh repairs of the trucks, because we couldn't keep up with it. And we're now initiating this uh the maintenance plan and all of that stuff. And um also, we finally have our matrix of the replacement. I remember I asked about for a while, now this is always there. So thank you so much for always having that for us. So uh, the only thing I would add is whatever the board goes with that, once we uh do that, that we also ensure to add that to our C I P amendments.
Yes.
I mean, we have it, we have it there already, but just in case of.
We'll come back, and if we make a purchase, or when we make a purchase, we will come back and and uh present that to the board. We're not gonna. You know, hide it. We're gonna make sure that we are very aware of what the board is doing, or what we're very aware of what staff is doing with the funds. So that you can see that we are doing our due diligence, that we did shop around, and we can bring in some options that we looked at before we made the purchase.
Come back to the board, what if the board is three weeks out, the next meeting?
No, 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 we can't come back and tell you that we're gonna, hey, we want to purchase this. We're gonna tell you what what we purchased and here's how we made the decision. It's 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 just so hard right now. Um, in the past, you could definitely do this where you want to order them, and it's just not an option anymore. And I I will give a bit quick caveat that this is not the first time I've experienced this. I mean, my previous, at my previous agency, we had to actually buy them off the lot, half ton trucks off the lot, because you just couldn't order them. They literally would not let you order them because they, the physical system was not operating.
Thank you. Uh, now I'm opening this section up for public comment. Steve?
Yeah, I worked fourteen years at a rental company. I was a transporter driver of all the heavy equipment, everything under the sun. And uh and then five years with U S Reynolds before they became United Reynolds. And the other company was what? Contraction Company out of the Bay Area. And I was, every year I took equipment down to the uh used equipment, down to the auction yards. Everything was beat up, wore out, twenty five hundred hours. And they were getting riveted because it was the customers that we rented to, they beat it to death.
Sure.
And I had to pick them up. I had to jump start stuff. I mean, things would just jump. And uh, so you might want to stick to something new. And even in the dump truck, I held dump trucks down there, everything's wore out, I mean, beat up. And uh, it's something to think about, so you can't beat new. Even have more expensive certified. They're gonna just break down possibly.
I assume you're gonna have an actual mechanic look at in the news.
Yes.
About part of it, I didn't see that. And then uh the fiscal impact doesn't state in the staff report where the funds are coming from?
It's C I P.
Right, but it's not in there. And then just a comment, um, the fire department in Garden Valley ordered a fire truck two years ago. There were supply chain uh issues for the red paint for like three months. Right now, it's the uh diamond. Um, plating, then there's a massive shortage. So that's probably why. Right now, they said if they were to reorder that fire truck, okay, four years.
I believe it. We had the same situation where we ordered a big, a service truck, a freightliner service truck. It was like three years later.
So and luckily, they asked them, because it was in Texas, to drive it out, to work it in. It had massive problems before it got there and had to turn around and tow it back to Texas. They still don't help me. So it's a massive, massive problem.
No more questions from the public, I'll close the public forum section and open it up. To final comments, questions from the board. Hey, do I have a motion? Uh, for the purchase. These vehicles based on the recommendations of the staff.
We can recommend purchase of two F five fifty or equivalent vehicles. And we will table the ten wheeler, and we will bring that back at a later time. I was just adding my piece, so you, that's absolutely fine.
All in favor?
How about second?
Second, well, they're still moved.
Well, hold on, hold on, we're gonna be technical. Your first did not include there, and I meant, so do you want to withdraw it?
You have to make it into the motion?
Yeah, okay, I motioned to buy two vehicles, F five fifty or equivalent fifty five hundred, uh not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand.
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Purchase of two vehicles, not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifty five hundreds. Thank you. Uh, last action item?
No. No, no F five fifties.
If it's all that we can buy, we're gonna have to do what we have to do, unfortunately. I I I agree with you. You're gonna, you're gonna evil, I find.
No, I just, oh. Uh, A D, appoint ad hoc labor committee for labor negotiations, possible action to appoint committee members. Board members to the committee um. To begin labor negotiations with local one and thirty nine, Nicholas?
Yes, so this is not a committee to negotiate with the union. However, this is a committee to receive the labor negotiations from the union. To give feedback and a position based on uh the district's position on these union M O Us. Um, I will be listed as the union negotiator for the district. Um, the stop stewards and the business agent will be the negotiators for the unions. This is to include both local one and local thirty nine uh unions. Currently, local one is um two years out of having uh an M O U, so they're they're very far out of having an uh. Out of their date range. Local thirty nine, I believe, just expired or was about to expire. Um, what I would recommend is to appoint two board members, um likely the treasurer and the president. Now, one caveat for this is this negotiation will happen over the next, I would say, three, six months or so. Uh, to be uh accepted sometime before the next fiscal year. And it would be recommended that whoever is the president of the board during that time. Be on the committee for this uh negotiation. So recommendation of treasurer and president. I understand that we are two year, two months or three months out from having those positions filled. So with the diligence of of understanding who may or may not be in those roles, we want, my. So with the diligence of, of understanding who may or may not be in those roles, we want, might want to uh. Nominate the correct people. I will leave it up to the board to discuss. Um, I did receive a public comment stating that the board. Is not allowed to new, be part of these negotiations. And I just want to address that that is not uh, the case. They are not. Part of the negotiations, but they still do receive the negotiations. And they are still the final approving body of any MOU that does come to the district.
Point of order, we can't discuss who the potential president and treasurer are because it's not on the agenda. Is that correct?
I'm not saying to discuss who they are. I'm saying to take it into account. We have a, we have a rotating policy. Of who is potentially going to be in those roles. And so all I was saying was to take into account who potentially could be in those roles. If it doesn't, if they don't end up in those roles, I don't see it as a problem. It's just a recommendation.
And at that time, we can always swap them out.
You could not. I mean, it was a serial meeting at that point.
What you're saying is first we have to determine which one of us are correct.
You have to determine which two board members would like to be part of this.
If you just pick two, it doesn't matter what position you're in.
That's fine. It's, that's totally up to you guys.
I wouldn't mind being involved with the negotiations. I definitely want to be involved in the negotiation.
But I think what you're looking for now is a motion to nominate two of the committee members. Um, that would not come from the committee members that are nominated themselves.
Yeah, I think we should hear what the other three. Or what anybody else has to say about it. There it is.
Um, how long have these negotiations been planning on laughing?
So, um, the negotiations with local one are gonna begin sometime in November, after November first. So. I, I wish I had a good answer for you, but sometime after that, and I'm hoping. Three months, maybe, two months, three months. I'm giving us. Like a six month window of, of having this ability to, to, you know, kind of do this, but it may be longer than that. You know, it just depends. And us, the really, it depends on what they ask for. And it could, it could just be, they're asking for. Everything under the sun and the, and the board says, hold, hold the phone, you know, there's no way we can do that. And then we go back to the union. And they're just not happy with what the, where the district's position is. And so it could be longer than we anticipate. I'm hoping it doesn't, but we always have to anticipate. Worse than better.
That would be a concern of having the two that are wanting to be on if we need to. Because they will be up for reelection.
So, so that's not a necessity. It's just a recommendation. Um, you can put any of the five board members on. Uh, that was just my recommendation.
No, I'm just saying, it's like looking at long term here and. Um.
I think she's saying for the, the board president.
Board officers.
Because the board president is, is, is.
They redo December.
Oh, oh, just to, so the, the treasurer, the treasurer and.
Yeah.
Well.
Unless you plan on holding on to your position.
I don't care.
Again and again and again.
Well, like I said, well, cash pressure. Yeah, that's a career. No, I think what I was saying was that I was thinking matters who's treasurer, who's. I mean, I don't think that is a requirement. I think, and we can pick whatever two people we want.
So, I want to be on the.
Me too.
Nobody else does, apparently.
Well, I would, but I wouldn't. I don't want to compete with you guys.
Arm wrestling.
She'll win.
So.
Okay, okay. So, well, we're gonna have public comment.
Go public comment. Mr. Dow.
Let's make a motion. Try something new.
I just have one question about it. So if they come back to the two people. And they rejected it, they can't tell the other board members what they get?
They cannot.
Okay.
It becomes a serial meeting. So it, it, yeah, it becomes a serial meeting. So what they can do is we can bring it, they can. Uh, receive whatever we have. And then we would have to agendize if they wanted to present those to the full board. Say they couldn't make a decision like. You know, I just don't know. And so they would agendize it. It would be a closed session item because it's a negotiation item. And then. They would be able to discuss with the other board members what was discussed at the committee meeting.
So I guess. That's the end of public forum, open session, that was public forum, question and answer. All right, now I'll hopefully back up to uh.
So much of this being quickest, quickest agenda item.
Yeah, I make a motion for President McDonald and Treasurer Thunberg to be appointed to the ZANH committee.
Well, I was wanting to know, the experience, any of you have had the negotiations in, in union uh, and or have you been. In some type of union management to know how to uh.
Is this like a job application?
Kinda, yeah, cause this is important. This is dollars and cents for this, this district.
We, we, we wouldn't be able to make any decisions. We would be bringing it back to the board. We can't, there's nothing that, that, that the ad hoc committee can do. As far as agreeing to anything or not agreeing to anything. It's basically just. You know, act as not the board, but.
Then you're being asked.
There you go.
There you go, yes. The other, the other two wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's like, we, we couldn't make any decisions. On behalf of the board or the district. But I do have experience.
Uh, you're looking at me and you didn't ask me a question, so I'm not sure what you're asking me for, so.
The way I perceive it is that we are delegating the responsibility to board members. To review the proposals and provide feedback. Period. That's it.
You're correct. They, they can make uh. Once, once they say a closed session and you can develop a district position, then they can delineate the district position, but. At that point, it still has to come back to the board for final, anything final.
And that's what I wasn't hearing from you originally, because you were saying it would go to them, they would talk about it. And go to you and make a, a decision. And.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, it's, it's gonna kind of go something like this. The, the union's gonna. Develop their position based on what the stewards and the business agent are gonna ask for. They're gonna then come to me and then myself and Frank will be part of, will be representing the district in the negotiations. So we'll receive their negotiations. We'll have a discussion about what it is that they're hoping for. We will be able to, you know, say, okay, um, I will probably have a meeting with the. Labor committee first, and then the five of you can develop some positions. And we can say, here's kind of hard no's or hard, you know, guesses. Um, based on where we are, and then we will delineate those positions back and forth.
In the way you initially spoke of it, it was more. A rigid, but it's, it's, it's.
Right.
Was only hearing thing.
No, I, I heard it too. And I could see why you said.
I apologize for unclear.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
All, all in favor? I, any opposed? None opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Director Thornborough and Director McDonald's. You representing the committee. Thank you.
Thank that.
Now. It's now four forty-two PM. You know, close the open session forum of the board meeting. And.